With beautiful surroundings, comfortable gathering spaces, and picturesque views, the campus of Atria Woodbrier offers the standard of senior living, long preferred by the most discerning older adults on Cape Cod. Atria Woodbrier Place, a new state-of-the-art building, offers independent and assisted living options with luxurious amenities, an environmentally friendly design and construction. Atria Woodbrier, 389 Gifford Street, Falmouth, 508-495-5500.
Remember, WC Communications is your printing team. We are calm and cool under pressure.
I'll call to order the September 8th meeting of the Board of Selectmen and invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item is a proclamation for the week of September 14th, Responsible Dog Ownership Day. If you will.
I'm Chair. Whereas the Cape Cod Kennel Club, a member club of the American Kennel Club, will hold its 100th All Breed Conference confirmation and obedience show on September 14th as part of the Cranberry Cluster Dog Shows in Falmouth September 14th. Whereas the Cape Cod Kennel Club, through the addition of the AKC Canine Partners Program, now speaks for all dogs and is committed to the AKC ideals of educating the public about responsible dog ownership by promoting permanent animal identification such as tattooing and microchipping, and programs such as the AKC's Canine Good Citizen. Whereas the American Kennel Club established AKC Responsible Dog Ownership Day on September 17th, the day of its founding, to promote all aspects of responsible dog ownership, including proper veterinary care, safety around children, and obedience training and licensing, which are essential to a happy and healthy bond between a dog and owner. Whereas the Cape Cod Kennel Club, as part of their centennial show, with permission from AKC and in conjunction with AKC Responsible Dog Ownership Days, will sponsor Responsible Dog Ownership Day booth at their centennial show in Falmouth, Sunday, September 14th, with educational displays and canine good citizen testing. Whereas every dog deserves a responsible, educated, and respectful owner. Now therefore we, Mary Pat Flynn, Doug Jones, Rebecca Moffett, Susan Moran, Samuel Patterson, as Selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, by the authority vested in us to hereby proclaim September 14th, 2014, as Cape Cod Kennel Club Centennial and American Kennel Club Responsible Dog Ownership Day in Falmouth. So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. And our second proclamation is for Suicide Prevention Week, which is September 8th to 14th. Susan, would you like to read it?
Sure. Whereas, in the United States, one person completes suicide every 13 minutes, and 108 people die by suicide each day in the United States. And whereas, suicide is the third-leading cause of death for adolescents and young adults in Massachusetts, and the suicide rate on the Cape and Islands is 1.4 times higher than the state average. And whereas suicide is a most tragic and disruptive event for families and communities, it is estimated that there are 5 million survivors who have lost a loved one to suicide. And whereas suicide is a public health issue, it is a community problem, and through education and awareness of the issue, a great number of suicides can be prevented. Therefore we, Mary Pat Flynn, Doug Jones, Rebecca Moffett, Susan Moran, and Samuel Patterson, as Selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, by the authority vested in us, to hereby officially designate the week of September 8th through 14th, 2014, as Suicide Prevention Week in Falmouth.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Is Jeanne Calvert here? No, I thought she might be here, and might have wanted to speak on it. There's also a very lovely ceremony at the Marshall County Superior Courthouse this Thursday at 11:00 a.m., where the Suicide Prevention Coalition holds ceremonies honoring and mourning, if you will, the honoring the people who work for prevention of suicide, and mourning those who have lost their lives over this past year. So if anybody might be interested in the ceremony, it's Thursday morning at the Superior Court. Okay, next we have an announcement from our shellfish warden, who we barely recognize, on the update to the shellfish regulations. I noticed they're very, the changes are very minimal, but Chuck, you just might want to mention them.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chuck Martinson. I'm the Deputy Director of the Department of Marine and Environment, and the Shellfish Constable as well. Every year, we update the annual shellfish regulations. It's the Board of Selectmen that actually approves the updates. You all received packets, I believe, this week, indicating what the updates are. The majority of the updates are just date modifications from last year to this year. However, there are two modifications that we did propose in the regulations, which I can go over briefly. I'd like to go over briefly if I could. The first would be a recreational shellfish day, which we're going to be holding in West Falmouth. We, annually, every year, we try to hold one. We've held them at Born's Pond for a number of years, and we're going to go ahead and try one in West Falmouth this year. We will be doing stuff with cohogs, scallops, and oysters over there. We have a number of oysters from the Little Pond Project that have been seeded over there. And that, we propose, would take place on October 4th, and we're requesting that the Board allow that day for variants and licenses from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. to allow anyone to come down and try shellfishing, and get some instruction, and hopefully go home with some shellfish. So that's really the first substantial request. And then the second one is, there's three areas where we have seeded oysters from the Little Pond Project. We've got about a million and a half, 1.25 million oysters that have gone out into three different areas. And we're requesting that the Board not allow in those areas jerk rigs, bull rigs, or T-100 lake rigs. The primary reason is because the large amount of oysters that are there, that type of gear will move the shellfish around and possibly damage the shellfish that are there. So there are other methods of collecting cohogs in those areas, but it would probably be prudent to hold off on some of the heavier gear in those small areas. And I don't know if the Board has any other questions on any of the other regulations or those ones, perhaps.
And Doug?
It's not really a question on the regulations, more a follow-up from something you had said a while ago, with a fear about poaching in some of the relay areas.
Sure.
Are we seeing much problems with that? Are people actually abiding by the restrictions that we put out there?
They are. They are abiding by the restrictions. We do have patrols that take place throughout the day and night of those areas, and we have not seen any evidence of any poaching at this point. But certainly as the season grows near, we really ramp up our efforts in those areas.
That's reassuring that these, so far, are so good.
So far, so good.
Sam?
Good, Susan.
Oh, sure. Yeah, good. I just wanted to suggest, if you haven't already, that you contact the West Falmouth Village Association to publicize, or Peter Partridge, I'm sure you speak with him all the time, just to talk it up. That's a great way of communicating. Also, Partan, I think, is the Communications Officer?
We've, we're working with Sia Karpalas from the Little Pond, or from, who works with Jerry Potamis, and we've brainstormed a number of people, including them, to get the move off.
Great.
So absolutely, and not just the group of people in West Falmouth, but also the residents in the area of Little Pond as well, where a lot of these shellfish were grown. You know, we wouldn't, certainly, it's a natural resource throughout the town, not just limited to those areas, so.
Great.
Sam?
My question for you is a more general one. Over, let's say, the last 20 years, do you feel like the programs that you're promoting here are actually improving the overall population of our shellfish?
We've done a lot of work in the last year and a half to two years with the support of the Board of Selectmen, and certainly Mr. Suso as well, to really enhance the amount of propagation that we've done. We have a Fisheries Biologist, Matthew Weeks, who's on board with us now. Certainly is, you know, water quality takes a tumble, the effort in growing shellfish and seeding them has to go up. I compare it to, you know, if you have canaries in a coal mine and your, you know, your air quality goes down, you need to have more canaries to cook, you know? So the reality of it is, is that we have to put more shellfish out there to get us through this time period until our water quality improves, and they will, you know, thrive on their own. But it is heavily seeded. Certainly, we have good years and bad years. Whenever you're dealing with a large amount of animals, that happens. But I'd say, on the whole, in the last two years, last year and a half, our propagation efforts have come a long way. We've got a new propagation center in Falmouth Harbor, which is putting out a tremendous amount of shellfish at this point. So I'm very happy with how it's been the last few years. The amount of money that's been invested into it has been, has worked really well. We've worked with various partnerships to really be able to extend our dollar, so. The support, certainly on the, you know, from the town, from my perspective, has been very helpful to get us to where we need to be to, you know, to get us through the environmental impacts.
But until we see some mitigation in the environmental impacts, we're going to have to artificially populate shelters.
We will, yeah.
Right, thank you.
I think, Chuck, it was a couple of years ago that we, the town meeting appropriated additional funds to help with the increase in seeding. Has that really taken place, and how's this?
Yes.
How much has the seed increased in the last couple of years, did you say?
So we, in the past, just to give you some rough numbers, we were growing roughly 1.5 million cohogs, and annually now we're growing about 5.3 million cohogs. And the, I think the most critical part to it is that we have a Fisheries Biologist, and all that he does is deal with shellfish, and some finfish as well. That's his sole designation. That's Matthew Weeks. And so what he can do is, he can get those animals to a larger size, and he can really have more hands-on with them, which means he can split them out, get them larger, he can go ahead and sift through them to get them appropriately size-graded. So as far as the cohogs have gone, that has gone way up. The oysters, we've never really done oysters before. In the last year and a half to two years, with both the work that the department's doing, and the Little Pond Project, which we oversee as well, we're looking at about the order of, I'm thinking about 4 million oysters over there. So that program's done really well as well. So I think we've noticed some real impacts. I think people are going to see, be really happy this fall when they start to see some of the, particularly the oysters, which grow a little bit quicker than the cohogs, so.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
And the Board, if, yeah, the Board could just go through. Unfortunately, it's, you know, it's a little bit timely. Just put through and vote in signers, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. So the motion?
I move that we approve the 2014-2015 Shellfish Regulations Package, or Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. Now, we move to public comment. Anyone who would like to speak on any matter that is not on the agenda tonight, yes? Susan Hayward?
Nancy.
Could you introduce yourself?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, and I am Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth Precinct 5. And I have two comments, and you're saying that I can't, if there is a topic on the agenda, there's no comment that I can make that might be construed to relate to that?
That's correct. If the, if there's an item on the agenda, then we would ask you make your comment when the item comes up on the agenda, but not a public comment.
All right, then I have one comment under truth and honesty.
Okay.
All Falmouth management boards, departments, commissions, committees should eradicate, delete the words "free money" from their vocabulary. And I will continue under that same topic later, if given the occasion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else under public comment? Then we move to the minutes, the minutes of August 18th.
The minutes of August 18th?
Which was a joint meeting of Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board.
I would move approval, but I did mention to Caroline how much I appreciate her parenthetical reference to us, taking things out of order, and how politely she pointed out that this needn't really make sense to put it here, but she had no choice but to do so.
Thank you.
I appreciate the, careful with which Caroline does it every single time. I would move approval.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. And then the meeting of August 25th, which, well, we have two parts. This, the first is the Selectments Meeting, the first part, and the second part of that meeting was a joint meeting among the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, and the Finance Committee. So the motion would be to approve the minutes of both.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. So next we will move to our summary of action, and the first are licenses. And the first is to approve the application for a lodging house license for Elizabeth Hathon at 165 North Falmouth Highway. Is she here? No. Okay, you may have noted in the, in the file that this is a, this is a, not a bed and breakfast, it's simply to, to lease, for rent, a room, or less than, less than three rooms. And in this particular case, there is no food permit required because it's only a continental breakfast, so the full breakfasts are being served. So this request is limited to a lodging house license for one suite with two lodgers, with a maximum of four allowed, and a continental breakfast only. Anybody have any questions or comments? Or would someone care to make a motion?
Some confused with the statement, maybe that's just the way the license works, that it's for two lodgers with a maximum of four lodgers. I'm not sure why it just wouldn't be four lodgers. Is it two lodgers, or is it four lodgers?
It could be two to four. Could be three lodgers. So it's either two and a maximum of four, not less than two and not more than four.
I'm sure they could do, I'm sure they could range it to one person.
That's not what they are requesting. They are requesting two people and not more than four people, you know, to a suite.
Goes to the outside limits of the license.
Yes, that's it. That's the way the license code is written. It has nothing to do with...
As I said, it doesn't make sense to me, but it probably doesn't really matter, so.
Yes.
And the building, that this, this lodging house, what type of a building is it? I mean, is it a single-family? Is it a condo? That was the part that I didn't understand when I went through. I, I didn't take a drive out there, but what I'm wondering, is this a private home, and they're asking that one room could sleep one to four people and have a continental breakfast?
Well, here's what the regulation says, that the bed and breakfast establishment, this is where lodging house license, means a private owner-occupied house. This says we're four or more, but that's what it is, a private owner-occupied house, so.
But, okay, a private owner, and then, is it a single family? And the family are there, but one room is going to be used?
That's not relevant to the, to the permit, no.
Okay. Okay.
And there are different categories of bed and breakfast establishments and bed and breakfast homes, and this one fits a very specific part of a license. You can obtain a license for this specific purpose. If you were going to be a B&amp;B home with three or more rooms, there's a, that is specified, and then it goes on. If you actually serve breakfast, then you have to get a Board of Health license for food. So this is a simple license that can be granted by the Board of Health for one room, one suite, with two people, and no more than four. It is that specific in the regulations.
And the next stages after us, it goes to the Building Department for approval, is correct.
Right. Is there anyone here representing the applicant? No?
Can we, can we wait until someone is here? We can ask them and do it another time, or is this...
Well, it depends on what you want to ask, because I'm not sure that, this is pretty clear as to what they're asking for, and according to the Board of Health, they have already looked at this, and there are no issues with the Board of Health, or the, I should say that the Board, the Health Department has reviewed this, because the application is to them, but the Board of Selectmen approves it, and this application meets the requirements for the license.
And the very last paragraph, just kind of explain this one to me, "in holder license, sleeping accommodations for four or more, unrelated borders and meals to accommodate."
But that's not what they're requesting. That's a different license. That would say exactly what the license was for. The license would say four or more, and there are other requirements if you have four or more. This one is very simple. It's only one room, and the reason is, the reason you need the license is because you are allowing people to use this room for rent. You are, you are obtaining rent. If you were just having people come in your house and you didn't charge them rent, you wouldn't need a license. But because they're paying, you have various categories of doing a B&amp;B, and this is like the minimal category.
Exactly. It's the first one I've heard of, that's all. So I just needed a little information about it, because I think some of that language, I just didn't understand that.
Well, it is confusing. I agree with you in reading it, if you're not that familiar, which I don't think any of us really are, yeah.
No, I don't think so.
Would the rent on this particular location, this facility, be then taxed? Is there a room tax? Do we assess room tax in Falmouth?
For B&amp;Bs, there is, yes.
So this would bring it into the tax base, essentially?
Yes, it would. B&amp;Bs, they're, do pay, the people who rent in a B&amp;B pay a tax, and the people who rent on time shares or other, otherwise do not, because that section has never passed, even though we had a conversation with the Speaker of the House about that, did we not?
We just did, that's right.
A couple of weeks ago.
We just did.
The unfairness of that tax, exactly.
I move approval. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. The motion carries. Now, under administrative orders, the first item we have is a vote to allow... Now, under administrative orders, the first item we have is a vote to allow the use of the town seal for communication of the Cape Light Compact Main Street program. And we have Maggie Downey here from the Cape Compact, and Meredith from the Cape Light Compact, I can't remember your last name, are we?
Miller, Meredith Miller.
No. Okay. We're very glad to have you. You have probably seen what was included in your, in your packet here regarding this offer that the Cape Light Compact is making to certain towns on the Cape that are willing to participate. Maggie, you might want to, or Meredith might want to speak to the program, yeah, if you would.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for putting us on your agenda. You are the third of the towns. We've done Chatham and Oak Bluffs, and this is an initiative, it's a Main Street initiative that other program administrators in Massachusetts are implementing, and we've kind of copied it and made it unique to the Cape and Vineyard. And basically, what it is, is we partner with the town to, and work with, notify the Chambers of Commerce and our other business associations to let them know that we're running a specific targeted offering for Main Street businesses in Falmouth. And I believe you have the letter which describes the timeframe, so it's a very, typically these have a defined time, and they have no, they're at no cost, so co-pays are waived. So the, anyone who participates in the program, so I hope anyone who has a business and uses less than 72,000 kilowatt hours a year, that's how you define it, consistent with our energy efficiency plan for a small business. So we've defined the program, it's for a commercial customer that uses less than 72, 72,000 kilowatt hours or less, and then they would be eligible for participation in this program if they sign up or contact us on or before October 24th. And as part of participating in the program, as I said, co-pays are waived, and eligible measures are high-performance T8 ballast lamps or fixtures, LED, screw and LED fixtures, as well as wall and ceiling mounted occupancy sensors, programmable and setback thermostats, vending machine controls, so if you've got a vending, vending misers would go on a soda machine, and water conservation. So if you're a restaurant, there are low-flow spray valves and different types of various particular measures towards this segment of our customers.
Doug?
What defines Main Street?
Meredith, you want to talk about, we were talking about this, because I said there are that many customers on Main Street, and it's like, well, it's called Main Street, but it's actually much larger, so Meredith, would you-
Meredith, can you come up to-
Sure, sure. We call it-
We call it Main Streets because it's meant to be serving customers that are clustered in a geographic area, which we think of as Main Streets. Mike, what we think of as micro businesses, small businesses, and the idea is to serve them more cost-effectively, have another delivery method to serve them by coming, concentrating our efforts in a geographic area. They don't have to be literally on Main Street. So what we do is that it's customers that are below a certain size, below 72,000 KWH, so they tend to be small independent businesses. And we have looked at our records for Falmouth, we would be sending out invitation letters or offer letters to 350 businesses in town. This is only, this is in addition to what we already do through our Small CNI program, so it's not taking anything away from our program. It's another delivery method to get at this kind of small customer with a special offer to get them involved.
But by saying it's a limited geographic area, are we saying, okay, we're talking downtown Falmouth, are we talking downtowns in all the different villages?
It's anybody within Falmouth, and so it can be anywhere, it's only limited by size.
By size of the business.
Yeah, the whole, the whole concept was, was based on this idea that you would focus on an area at once, that's where the name comes from, but yes, no.
So, could you?
Sure. So part of this program would be, if I understand it correctly, that the small businesses would get some free materials and work? And would they also be offered other materials and work for a fee?
Sure. What, this is focused on delivering certain measures that we can deliver at no cost, but if there were other things that were applicable that we do through the larger program, we would refer them into the larger program where they could go on and get a proposal where they would have up to 80% covered by incentive. So we have chosen a set of measures that can be delivered easily and consistently at no cost, so we can, and by delivering it uniformly. So this is in addition to the regular program where typically someone would pay 20% co-pay, and we would pay 80%. So the answer is yes, there may be some other measures, but they wouldn't be delivered through this, they would be delivered through our conventional program.
But they would be, these are really, I mean, these are salespeople that would say, you know, we did an energy audit, and this is what we're going to give you for free, and this is where you also need to tighten up your energy use. Yes?
There, there would be leads into the regular program, yes, but they wouldn't get proposals directly out of this, they'd have a follow-up, someone would contact them for a follow-up to go through the rest of the program for the other measures. I see what you're saying. It is a smaller energy audit and a more targeted focused energy audit to make sure we get these things in, and then people would have the choice of participating in the larger program.
I just wanted to-
Yeah.
It is, and we're trying to introduce the program at, to businesses who may or may not have participated since LEDs have become so much more affordable, and then there may be opportunities to come back, if there are HVAC, there are heating and ventilation systems, that would be through our standard program, or there may not be. It would, it would just depend, but again, this is what we're, we're trying to introduce the 350 businesses to the energy efficiency program and get them interested in participating if there are other measures. For some, for this segment of customers, there might not be anything else. I mean, if you think about, I'll pick a pizza parlor, there, after this, there's not a whole lot else that we would be able to, to offer them, but if it was a small or, you know, a restaurant, there may be other-
They might have walk-in coolers, they might be able to have economizers, put on their walk-in coolers, that kind of thing, so we would definitely refer them to that.
Right, and sometimes what we found in our two towns and what the other administrators have found statewide, is this is an introduction, and you know what, you're kind of, do you like it, do, did you have us find a savings, and do you want to take the next step and go further?
So who pays for the free stuff that the businesses will get?
We do. We pay, all of us pay every month on our energy, there's no free lunch. All of us pay on our energy efficiency charges that are paid every month on our electric bill. So these measures are part of an approved plan that we submitted to the Department of Public Utilities. So this, and this was described in the plan on a statewide level, offering these. So we are implementing what we've basically stayed, we picked Falmouth because you have a nice concentrated downtown. We tried to, excuse me, I said Chatham, I meant to say Province Town.
Well, we have, we did Province Town and Oak Bluffs, but Chatham is also going to be underway this fall.
Chatham's next. We started really, very small, in a, with Province Town in the off-season to, you know, work out the bugs, and now we're, we're doing two towns close, Oak Bluffs and Falmouth.
Thank you.
You kind of went pretty quickly on the energy efficiency funds that the Compact has and where they come from. And as you mentioned, all of us who pay our electric bill, what, there's a certain, what do they call it, the middle ladder?
No, but there is, it's close, it's a system benefit charge, it's an SBC charge-
A benefit charge, and it's on your bill?
It's on your, your bill. So you pay, your costs for the energy audit are in two places on your electric bill, I wish I had, like I want to show on PowerPoint. The first is in, if you had a bill, you would see an energy efficiency charge, system benefit charge. That's about, it's a quarter of a cent. And then also in the distribution charges are the balance of the funds that we submit and collect every year. Those funds we reconcile with the Department of Public Utilities, we have a three-year plan and a three-year budget, and every year we report on our expenditures, and the, those collections change based on what we've spent to the approved plan.
So then you can, so the idea is to do programs like this, and the funds from that energy, or the monies from that energy efficiency funds are being used to pay for a program like this?
Correct. With the Cape Light Compact and Town of Falmouth is a member of the Compact, and I know you know this, what we do is we make sure that all of the funds that are collected from the rate payers on the Cape and Vineyard stay and are reinvested on the Cape and Vineyard. So all the dollars that we collect come right back into our community, as opposed to going into a larger pool if it was run by M-Star, NU, or another utility. So, but we do manage the funds on behalf of all the rate payers on the Cape and the Vineyard.
If we didn't do this business, would that mean that we would not need to increase the rate as much next year to fund it?
Well, the budgets are set for, through 2015, so if you didn't, if we didn't do this, there would be another town that would, would step up because it's been very successful. So the dollars are reinvested in other, we have a long waitlist for the energy efficiency programs. We just finished our streetlight program, I've been here, I was here a lot last, this spring, and Kevin was here, I think, most recently, so that's another example of the different customer segments of using the energy efficiency dollars for this streetlight LED retrofit.
But if all the towns said no, we're not going to buy into it?
If all the towns said no, if everybody said no, because that's easier. If nobody partook in the energy efficiency program and said they didn't want to use it, the next, you wouldn't, you can't over-collect, so you wouldn't be sitting on millions of dollars. You're, you're, we have, now you're going to really make me use acronyms, there's something called an IRF, it's an Energy Efficiency Reconciliation Factor that we file every November with the Department of Public Utilities. So if we didn't spend any money, the IRF would be adjusted downward to reflect a budget carry for it, and that's how we set the budgets every, that's how the, your electric charges for energy efficiency change from year to year. It's based on expenditures to date and anticipated projects coming forward.
So it is true, the more we spend, the more we pay?
No, because we have an approved budget, so we have a plan. And just so you remember, we are ordered by the State Green Communities Act to do all cost-effective measures before, to meet growing demand before building new generation plants, because energy efficiency is cheaper than building new power supply plants. So an example I used, if the Cape Light Compact wasn't here, you would be paying into the M-Star fund, but without that return of making sure that those funds stay on the Cape, they would just be spent in other sections of Massachusetts on your behalf. The beauty, some say yes, some say, of the Cape Light Compact is we make sure that we don't, we collect funds only that we need and we can use. I may have mentioned, I know I mentioned when I was here giving my update in the spring that we're in the middle of a penetration study right now, and that's exactly what we're looking at. We're looking at, for the next three-year plan, which starts 2016, 17, and 18, what do we need? Who's been served? What's left to do? And what should we be collecting for this program? So we really want to make sure that we're not over-collecting and that we're actually serving what customers, finding out what customers need. That study should be wrapping up in early 2015, and that will be working on my next three-year plan and shaping it. So it is kind of like a circle, to make sure that you don't end up sitting on rate payer funds, so you would, they'd be returned.
And really, the whole idea is to get people to be so aware that there are ways to reduce the cost of their energy. Sue and I attended a lecture at the Witzel Research Center last Thursday, and two of the research associates at, at the, at the center, one has been there for 12 years and one has only been there five years, and the two of them, and you probably know who they are, because they said they worked with the Cape Light Compact, who helped them reduce the energy costs in their home. And each of them described to us, like, one over a period of years, how long it took him to make his house so energy efficient, and the second one is fairly new at it. That's what I told you the other day, Maggie, about the Raspberry Pi?
Right.
You know, that monitor or something that, some kind of computer equipment that you can buy that monitors everything you use. But really, this is what people are doing. They're, they're really trying to find ways to reduce their cost of energy in their homes, and this is just another plan for helping businesses to begin to do the same thing. So, and I'm glad you pointed out that it really isn't free, in a way. It's been paid for by others, and these are the incentives to get other people to find ways to reduce the energy costs, so that eventually, someday, we'll all be doing it.
Right, and, and, you know, we, budgets, since the Green Communities passed, remember, they were very small, we had about a $5 million budget, then the Green Communities Act mandated us to have higher goals and, which led to higher budgets. And you're, we're at this point where we will be start to, to be declining, because you can't, you know, you're going to be fully served, and we're, we're not there, I'm like, we're right about here, but at some point, it's going to be back down to, what's the sweet spot, 5 million, 6 million, the regular SBC, that's what, that's what the analysis will hopefully tell us when we do our planning.
So you're working to put yourself out of business?
Ideally, yes. I mean, seriously, you know, there's always new construction, there's always new technologies, but, you know, you don't need years and years and years of $25 million budgets. At some point, we'll be served, and that's what we're working on, that's what this is, you know, we're getting very, very familiar with who are our larger customers, who hasn't participated, what's left to do, and how do we crack that money? And it's not just about commercial customers, it's always, you know, residential customers are paying to the fund as well.
Sam?
I might say, I've had my house audited twice over 11 years, and I was surprised that the new technology is the second time around. And the products are actually far more effective, you know, the LED light bulbs and things of that sort, so I can see where, you know, this could be an ongoing program that will gain additional efficiencies in time.
And smaller, because what you'll see in the next three-year plan on the residential side is, you might come in because there'll be LED lighting, and the LED lighting, there'll be no more CFLs, there's no American Descents, no more CFLs, it'll be LEDs, and it'll go on, and it'll keep evolving, but we're in this, we're in a curve of very, very large programs that I think we will, you know, in six years, we can say, wow, we really, we got everybody, good job, guys.
So, oh, well, let's wait to see if the boards, do anybody else have any other questions from Maggie or Meredith? Sam?
The only question I had in reading through this had to do with the use of our seal in their literature. And I wanted to ask, is this also an initiative of our Energy Committee?
I don't know, I haven't talked. We talked to, I believe we talked to Heather, and working for Julian, and inquired as to whether we should be working with the Energy Committee or some other committee, and suggested to us that we come to the Board of Selectmen. I do not believe that we've worked for the Energy Committee, but we certainly can. We, what we've typically done is go to each town and say, who do you want us to work with, to make, to, you know, to preview the letter and to get, give sign off on this, so it's-
We can send it, we can have no, absent in the materials, we're very familiar, we've been, worked very closely with the Energy Committee.
And I believe that we did talk, when we first talked with Heather, she said that, and, because we've had contact with a number of people in the Energy Committee, so she suggested we go through, come to the Board of Selectmen as opposed to going through the Energy Committee, but-
And Sam, to respond to your question too, I had the same thought when I saw putting the seal on, because we're very protective about the seal, and in talking with Julian about it, and Julian talking, I guess with Maggie or somebody, someone talked to Maggie, is that the idea that this is a collaboration, this is a joint venture between the town and the Compact, the town is supporting it, the Compact is supporting it, and we want our businesses, if they're so willing, to take advantage of it. So that's why the seal is there, to show that it's a collaborative effort between the town and the Compact.
I understand, I-
Yeah, but we do have, that's what we have to approve too, is the use of the seal.
Right. It just seems like it's skipping a step in the way we normally consider things, and it would have been nice to have had the Energy Committee's endorsement, but anyway.
Any other questions from Maggie or Meredith? No, then I think we have a question in the back. Nancy, did I call you Susan? I did, didn't I?
Doesn't matter.
Well, it does to me.
Old, old man.
I know.
Hang on.
See, you're a movie star, Nancy, and you don't know it.
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth Precinct 5. Well, I'm a little bit speechless after this presentation, because what it says in the agenda, which Mr. Patterson finally brought the presentation around to, was simply approve an application, excuse me, a vote to allow the use of the town seal for communication of the Cape Light Compact Main Street program. I guess if I'd been writing this agenda, I would have put something in about a presentation on the Cape Light Compact on Main Street, and you might have gotten some people to come to the Selectmen's meeting who were interested in that. So I don't know whether you missed some vital people, and I guess I'm a little taken aback, because I thought that, I thought the businesses on Main Street were private businesses, and I would have thought that if the private businesses on Main Street or other parts of Falmouth wanted to enter into some sort of a contract about their energy with the Cape Light Compact, does it require some sort of approval from the Board of Selectmen for them to enter into-
Nancy, let me explain, this is really not to approve the program. That, this is simply- simply to approve the use of the seal.
Very good.
But in order to make it known to people why that we are approving the use of our seal on the program, is some understanding of what the program is. So it was, that part was informational, to let people know about, but we're not approving the program. We don't need to. This is between the compact and the business owner. We're only approving the use of the seal.
Well, I assumed that, but I'm glad to have it said. And I will now read the second part of my truth and honesty. When I see any indication on a document, or a vehicle, or any kind of a reference to the town of Falmouth in words or symbols, I expect the origin of this operation to relate directly to the town. And I myself, if the Cape Light Compact has something that they want the store owners to put on their businesses, it seems to me that that's fine. But why would these businesses make use of the town's seal or a reference to the town unless they were making the town responsible under liability and other things? When does the town give out its name and seal? I personally would like to let you know that I don't think that's an appropriate use of the seal. And thank you for letting me take your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Is there any further discussion on this, or are we ready to have a motion to approve the use of the seal on the letterhead?
Then I'll make a motion that we approve the use of the town's seal on the letterhead for the Cape Light Compact Main Street Initiative Program.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Any comments?
Well, I think, I would just say, in kind of responding to Nancy's comments, that I do see this as a community. On this, on why I'm in favor of this, is that basically I see this as a community program. And I know we're putting our name, our seal on the literature that's going to go out, but I think we are supporting it in that sense. So I'm, I'm inclined to vote for this.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Good luck with your. Yeah, that's a very good idea. Thank you. Public hearing, yes, we do. Let's see. So that was... Okay, we're going to skip to public hearings at this point. And we're going to, is there, oh, Mike is here. We're going to move to a wetland hearing, which is a pier construction at 92, well, let me read that hearing notice. The Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77 Wetland Retland Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth on September 8, 2014, at 7:40 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on the application of Robert and Elizabeth Rotandi for permission to extend the existing fixed pier approximately 16 feet into Charles River and located at 92 Edgewater Drive East, East Falmouth. Area affected is Charles River. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the Selectmen's office. And Mr. Borselli, for the applicant?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the board, my name is Michael Borselli of Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant. The applicant is here tonight seeking a special permit to allow him to extend his existing licensed and permitted dock by 16 feet. The applicant has discovered through acquiring the property and utilizing the dock that the water depth at the current dock is really not sufficient to accommodate typical boats in this water body. So what the result of that is, is there's a potential for the boat to be grounded at certain low tides.
Mike, before you continue, do you have some plans with you?
I, I have.
I only have one.
Oh, I, we submitted several plans. I have one on a board I can present.
I think it would be helpful.
The, the reason for the requested pier extension is, as I was alluding to, there is less than three feet of water in the areas of the existing permitted dock where boats are currently required to dock. The extension of 16 feet would put the boats in deeper water, which would be better for the environment and better for the boats. The current dock has a Chapter 91 license. It has standing and is legal and permitted. And while not necessary to extend the dock, the owner would like to extend it for the reasons I just alluded to. Prior to coming here tonight, as is required, we went to the Falmouth Conservation Commission and received approval for the dock extension through the Conservation Commission. In order of conditions, which is their approval document, was submitted with our application package to you, I guess along with a reduced copy of the plan. So I've been before you on a number of occasions to ask for permission for completely new docks. And the construction of this extension is the same exact type of construction that you are familiar with. It is a timber pier extension, and it'll require the installation of two new pilings at the end of the pier extension so that it can be supported on the end with the required timber stringers and then the decking. The decking on the dock will be replaced with a better decking material called through-flow decking, which allows for sunlight penetration to the bottom, which is better for the substrate and the shellfish that exist in this area. There are few shellfish here. We're required to perform a shellfish survey and associated report, which was submitted with the application and attached to your application, as well as the Conservation Commission's. It's below the threshold for significance by Falmouth Regulations. And the extension would be better for the shellfish, because the boats would be tied in deeper water. The boats, there's two boats that the owner owns, a smaller whaler-type boat, and then a boat that's approximately 25 feet in length. Both have, would be docked in a way that the propellers on the outboard engines are in facing seaweed so that there would be no potential for prop wash from the propellers. The dock will also be retrofitted with a railing system in all areas where boats should not be tied, as a recommendation of the Conservation Commission. That would be on the sections of the dock where the water's shallower, so that they're not encouraged to tie the boats, more than, more than the two boats, in shallow water, but only at the end. There'd be no railings on the 16-foot section, because the railing would get in the way if you were getting in and out of the boat. And the only other thing we're proposing to do is move two pilings that are currently just off the side of the dock, and they're used to tie the boat, help better secure it in the place where it ties against the pier. They're called tie-off pilings, and they're on the outside of, the other side of the boat from the dock, so the boat doesn't move around and collide with the fixed dock. We're, we're asking permission to move those pilings out to the same position, the 16-foot extension, so that everything basically shifts out 16 feet, the boats in the dock, into deeper water. We did get a letter from the harbor master. He has no issues with the dock extension. We always get a sign off from Greg Fraser. It's a, just, just in, as a matter of course, because there's a potential to impact navigation. We're also required to do that as a submittal requirement to the Conservation Commission. So that's also in your file. There's also, I believe, a copy of the Chapter 91 license for the original dock. So I think I spoke more than I needed to about a 16-foot dock extension, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
It looks like there's plenty of water. How far, percentage-wise, does it go into Charles River? I mean, how much more water do we have across to the other coast?
Well, the deepest part of the channel, which would be over where these words, Charles River, are, is about five to six feet deep. We're, we're extending across the overall width of the Charles River in this location, probably about 15% max. I didn't do the calculation. Fifteen, between 10 and 15%. The other side of the shore is a significant distance away.
And we, I did read that there is a mooring that may need to be moved. Has that been resolved?
It's routine and customary for the harbor master to work with people that want to do these types of things, to shift a mooring around if it's in conflict, and that shifting of the mooring is at the applicant's expense. So that detail would be worked out with them.
The other thing is, on the railings that you talked about, I didn't see in the conditions, the order of conditions where they're listed to keep it of being two boats. And that was my concern, whether this was going to become a four or five-boat thing. And I couldn't find any reference in the special conditions to guarantee that that railing was put there and that only two boats were going to ever be used there.
I understand. What I can tell you is they approved the plan, a specific plan with a specific reference, and the railings are on the plan. So there will be an inspection at the end. And I, I think you have the ability to put a condition if you would like to. The owner has no intentions of having any more than the two boats on the dock.
I think it would be appropriate that we could stipulate that in our vote, as well as, I want to go back to the harbor master, because he did, and we, Julia and I spoke to him today to clarify it, because the, the report that he, that he gave us really wasn't totally complete. But what he was saying is that if the dock is impacted in any way from use of the existing mooring, in other words, if the dock impacts someone else using the mooring.
Yes.
That it should be the applicant's responsibility to pay for the mooring relocation, and assuming a suitable space can be found. And that he would approve the 16-foot extension with these stipulations.
Absolutely.
Related to the mooring, that if they were, if the boat in any way were going to impact on the mooring, that the applicant then would have to make arrangements to have the mooring moved. And then, as well as the only two, two boats on that dock. I thought it was unusual that it wasn't a T dock. How come it isn't? Is because of the two boats?
The only reason it's not a T, or I would have been recommending a T, is because the owner has two boats. Most of the docks you see that we propose now have a T.
Right.
And they're limited to the one, one dock, one boat, for a new, a new dock. That's the only reason.
That's what I figured, but I wanted to have it stated for the record. Any other questions? Sue?
I just want to be clear. So the issue about the potential conflict of the mooring will be resolved before this is built?
No.
You put that as a condition?
No, we put it as a condition on the license, that if in fact the mooring creates a conflict for someone else because of the closeness of the boat tied to that dock and the, and the distance, or the distance to the mooring, that the applicant will, at his expense, will move the mooring.
Okay.
Is that your understanding?
Yes. The mooring is not right near the dock, but it has the potential to have a conflict, depending on the size boat moored on the mooring.
And it's mooring CR53.
Yes.
So that mooring number is CR53, and that should be specified in our stipulation as well, that that's the mooring. This one, here. Any other questions about the dock? Okay, then I'd be looking for a motion.
To close the hearing, or do you want your public comment on it?
Yes, we can do that. So then a motion to close the hearing. And then we'll ask for public comment. We'll ask for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this dock? Is there anyone who would like to speak not in favor of the dock?
I would move, we can close the hearing.
Neither in favor or not, just a question.
Could you come to the microphone, Charlie?
Charlie McCaffrey. What is the length of the dock that, after the 16 feet is added?
It'll be 62 feet long from mean high water, mean high water line seaweed after the extension.
I would say the motion would be to approve.
So close the hearing?
Okay, close the hearing, yeah. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. The hearing is closed. Now, any other comments or discussion from the board on this?
I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the extension of the pier with the following additional conditions to what the Conservation Commission had. One is to make a special order conditions, specifically talking about the railing on the side of the dock, make it very clear that there would be space for the two boats, and no more than the two boats. And that also that mooring are 53.
CR.
Okay.
CR53.
CR53. The issue is dealing with the possible conflict between that mooring and the extension of the dock be resolved at the expense, if there are any, if there are any conflicts that they will resolve at the expense of the applicant.
Can we also indicate, must comply with the standard and special orders of conditions of the Conservation Commission?
Anything else?
Second.
Second motion? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much. This is the plan dated January 10, 2014.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry, but then updated to...
Just addend that into the motion, if you would.
To May 12, 2014.
That's the specification.
Now we will go back to our other agenda, which we are still on administrative orders. And the next item is the Notanica Woods Project. The vote is to approve a grant to the Falmouth Housing Corporation from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Trust Fund in the amount of $540,000, contingent upon a recommendation from the CPC that, that's it, from the CPC, from the Community Preservation Committee. So we're not speaking in acronyms.
Madam Chair, I would just might interject. The, you and other members of the board have a copy of a, a draft lengthy motion, to which would merely be added the last phrase you indicated, contingent upon a recommendation from the CPC. That is in your board packet.
Right. So, anyone care to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen act in this Board of Trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund vote to award $540,000 to the Falmouth Housing Corporation for the benefit of the Notanica Woods Affordable Housing Project. This award is in the form of a grant for the purposes of, one, reimbursement of pre-development costs for the design and engineering of the project in the amount not to exceed $100,000, and reimbursement of construction costs in the amount not to exceed $440,000. This vote of the board does not specify a time of the award, but is agreed that time is of the essence and is a contingent upon the recommendation from the CPC.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Ralph, would you like to say something on the motion?
Good evening. Ralph Herbst. Plenary Board Representative to the Community Preservation Committee, and currently the Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. This particular issue has a long history. We've got a folder here, it's three-quarters of an inch thick. It covers just the attempt to restart this project. I'm not going to read that to you. The Board of Selectmen approved this project two years ago. And then it stalled, for several reasons. We had an administrative change going on at the Community Preservation Committee. Mr. Murray, Bob Murray, who was the Chairman of the Falmouth Housing Corporation, his health was declining. And he also, the Falmouth Housing Corporation also had some legal issues that they had to work out. So that pretty much consumed most of that two years. Now, several of you were not on the Board of Selectmen when that was approved two years ago. The legislation for the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund dictates here. And what it does is it expedites, hopefully, affordable housing, or in CPC terms, community housing projects. And the way it does that is because it, the special legislation establishes a procedure, and also they fund, so that people don't have to go to town meeting to get their funding. Real estate transactions occur all during the year, not just in the spring and in the fall. So this was an attempt by the CPC to improve how affordable housing can be funded in this town. It hasn't worked very well in this particular situation. It has worked twice before. Once for a recent dedication that was over on Shore Street. And that was rather long and drawn out also, but it was successful. Another, the other success was when the Affordable Housing Committee came to you, came through us to you, and asked for a study to be done, which is currently wrapping up and will be presented to you and the public next month. So it's very, very important that you, the Board of Selectmen, understand the process of how this works. And you, the first thing you need, and you really need and need to read, the special legislation that was passed by the state creating this fund. If you don't, then you won't be able to do what you're supposed to do. And I want to read you the only paragraph that I'm going to reference tonight. And it's, and this, by the way, this legislation is only one and three-quarters pages long. So that makes it really nice. But I want to read you what is pertinent from this legislation to what you are doing tonight. It says, quote, "Grants or loans from the fund shall be authorized by an affirmative vote of the Board of Selectmen only after recommendation from the Community Preservation Committee," unquote. Okay? So that sets up the sequence. CPC makes the recommendation to you, then you vote. We're doing it the other way tonight. And I want to emphasize that this is an anomaly, and the CPC won't do it again. And the reason we're doing it tonight is because the Falmouth Housing Corporation is very frustrated with how things have gone in the recent period of time to move this project forward. Now Linda Clark is currently the Executive Director of the Falmouth Housing Corporation. And if we had delayed this further, and waited until the CPC votes this coming Thursday, or whenever, we could get it on our agenda, and had delayed it even further, I'm afraid that she would have withdrawn her proposal. So I sent a memo to Mr. Suso saying that I think that the Board of Selectmen should vote on this project contingent upon our vote on Thursday night. Now, Mr. Patterson is your liaison to our committee. So he will be there, and he will listen to what I have to say to my committee. And I have to justify to my committee what's going on tonight. I had to make the decision, because I'm the chairman. So it's just imperative that you understand that this is an anomaly, and it is an exception to the rule, and we won't do it again. All right. Now, we have to vote again. Why? Well, two years ago, this project was granted a loan. You can do, this special legislation allows for grants or loans. So that's some nice flexibility there for the town. Tonight, you're voting on a grant. That's different. There's no payback, there's no interest, there's none of that. Now, it was switched from a loan to a grant this last week by the administration without consulting the Community Preservation Committee. That's got to stop. What has to happen is what Mr. Suso has recommended. He has recommended that one of our members, Ms. Haney, who is our Community Preservation Affordable Housing guru, sit down with someone from the town and develop the procedures as to how these things will move through the town and get approved. We're all advocates of affordable housing. We need to take this procedure and make it work better. There is a paragraph in here, which I won't read to you, but it references how, how the guidelines are established. And it includes the Community Preservation Committee. That hasn't happened, and it needs to happen. Mr. Suso has put that in motion, and that's what has to happen in the future. And you will have another application very shortly, because the Falmouth Housing Trust is now, has been awarded money, and will be awarded money, and it has to be approved by you. And they want to see the legal documents drafted up and presented and reviewed. And then the Community Preservation Committee will make a recommendation to you, and you are the final vote. That's the power that you have in moving affordable housing forward under this legislation. All right, we meet Thursday, seven o'clock. You're all, of course, invited, if you'd like to attend. I have to make a presentation to the Community Preservation Committee, explaining what has transpired, because we have not held a meeting since the rules were changed without consulting us, and it was moved from a loan to a grant. So I can tell you that I am reasonably confident that the Community Preservation Committee would vote a positive recommendation of this grant, because they approved it two years ago as a loan. And in the past, most of the money that the Community Preservation Committee has dedicated to affordable housing was in the form of grants. Before we adopted this, we had granted considerable amount of money through town meeting to not only the Falmouth Housing Corporation, but to other affordable housing organizations. So, in summary, I urge you to vote in favor of this, contingent upon the CPC making a recommendation to you this coming Thursday. And if we do that, I will send, we will send a memo to Mr. Suso, and he will forward it to you, Pat, and to the rest of you, so that you know that hopefully what you're doing tonight will be successful. Thank you very much.
I just want to say, Ralph, thank you so much for your comments. I know, I found them enormously helpful, and I'm sure the other board members have as well. And I think as I listened to you, it reminded me that I'm the only one on this board now who was here when this Falmouth Housing, what do we call it?
Portion Corporation.
Board was created. And I think, and we went through a lot of meetings and education. We went to workshops. I went to workshops in, somewhere in the state with Barb Schneider, when she was the chair, and we were putting all this together. So I think it would be really helpful for this board to have a presentation on what is this fund? And why is it a fund that is only authorized by the Selectmen? And why does it work this way? And I think it will make it a lot easier for our board to really understand the process as well. So I really thank you for your comments.
Okay, you're welcome. It's not rocket science, by any means. And the reason we did it is, as I said, to avoid having to go to town meeting. And there's a few other issues. There were other options, there were other models we could use. And we chose this one, as I recall, first of all, so that there would be some control from the CPC and some control from the Board of Selectmen. Remember that the CPC funds, puts money into this Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. We have to, we have to go to town meeting to put the money in there. Now, there's almost a million dollars in there right now, and it's sort of languishing. We need to move this project forward. It's a great project. I'm sure you're all familiar with it, in Antatika Way, on Woods Hole Road. And it's, how many units, Linda?
Eleven units.
Eleven units, okay. So, just, you know, that's, those are some of the reasons. There is, like I said, another model, and you may be exposed to that other model here shortly, through, because the consultant for the Affordable Housing Committee that did these, that's doing this, currently wrapping up her study on housing in Falmouth, and the presentation is next month. She may be recommending a different model. So we will have to decide that, because to undo all the legislation and redo more legislation and so forth? One other thing. The other model did require an entirely new board, all new volunteers, lots of autonomy. And that's what she will present to everyone about that. We at the CPC haven't discussed that yet. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, wait a second. You better stay there. Doug, you have a question. We'll start with you.
I just want to reiterate what you said about town meeting. The town meeting is authorizing the initial expenditure of the money into the fund. And then we're not going back to town meeting because of the timeliness issue involved in some of these...
Absolutely.
Issues. Sometimes these projects need to happen fast in their town meeting. And that's the reason that town meeting is not part of it, not because, they've already approved the money anyway, and then how can we do this quickly? Because the project may be available.
They are a part of it initially by placing the money into the fund. Yes, that's correct.
Yes. Ralph, the CPC has a policy for allocating its funds to certain percentages for historical projects, for community housing, and others like open space and then some recreation, right?
Correct.
Is there funding available to cover this grant now? That's been moved from loan to grant?
Oh, yes. This Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund was approved several years ago, funded by the Community Preservation Committee. And like I said, there's over a million dollars in there. Now, Falmouth Housing Corporation is asking for five hundred and forty thousand. That still leaves a lot of money in there for other projects, which we're hoping, you know, to, which we're encouraging people to come, to come to us. But it's got to start with the CPC, and then move through the process in the town, and then end up on your plate.
But these funds are not commingled in this...
I'm sorry?
The funds are not commingled. In other words, the CPC has their tax funds that they get. But these are different funds. These are funds that come from a town meeting appropriation, which are separate from the tax funds they get from the three percent. Is that right?
No, they were just done a few years ago. These are funds that, a few years ago, were collected under the three percent and appropriate for affordable housing into the Affordable Housing Fund.
Is that right?
Well, it's the three percent plus the state match.
Right.
Now, the state match originally was a hundred percent. We had a lot of money. Nine years later, we're getting about twenty-seven percent match from the state, because more towns have adopted the Community Preservation Act, and the decline in real estate transactions, which is what funds the Community Preservation Bank at the state level. And so we've already been advised that this year, that there's a slight decline in real estate transactions, which will reduce our match a little bit. On the other hand, the legislation approved a twenty-five million dollar, one-year infusion of money into the, into the fund, which they did last year, which doubled our match last year. But we didn't get it in time to deal with the projects that were presented to us last year. But it's still, it's in what we now call our undesignated fund, which means we've got money there, but it hasn't been designated to somebody.
So to be clear, the funds that go into the housing fund are actually part of the monies we get from the state and from the taxes. They're not a separate appropriation.
That's correct.
That's what I wasn't aware of.
Right. The majority of the three percent that we receive from the town, because we tax ourselves, goes to paying off the land bank debt. There's a little surplus there, but not much. So mostly what the CPC has to work with is the match. And in the beginning, we were...
Golden.
Fat, dumb, and happy. And now we really have to be very discreet on how we recommend. We don't spend the money, that's very easy for us to say, for us to recommend the money to the town's legislature, which is town meeting.
Becky has a question.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just doing a timeline. And if you were saying that this has been a project for two years, and then the next thing that we need is to make sure that we have a recommendation from the CPC, and you would like for us to vote tonight without that recommendation? And so if I'm starting something back two years, and we're coming up, our meeting is Monday, and your meeting is on Thursday, why can't we wait till your vote? And then we would come back, and we would have our vote with your recommendation? The recommendation first, Selectmen's vote second.
I can't guarantee you that the CPC will vote a positive recommendation to you. So I don't want to delay this one day more, after all of the delays that we've had. And if you give Ms. Clark an opportunity to get up here and talk to you before you vote, you'll understand what I'm saying.
So the difference between Monday and Thursday, when this has been two years on the book?
Correct.
And you don't want to wait until our next meeting?
I do not.
I think, I think we should, the reason that it's... I think, I think we should, the reason that it's taken so long, the two years, is because this is property that was abandoned by a previous owner, who was going to build housing there, and actually constructed, what, one house or part of a house or something?
Yeah, it was a one, very large.
And then he left town. And, and there was, there was a large amount of legal issues involved, just to be able, when Bob Murray was still alive. He was the one who really saw that opportunity and worked to get that property legally in the hands of the trusts, or the whomever, someone who could actually take it and make something out of it. So that went on for a long time, until that happened. And Bob Murray died, and then a lot of things had to regroup, and so it took a long time to get to this point.
I'm just saying the difference in our meeting tonight without a recommendation, and our meeting, the next meeting we would have in two weeks, would then have an up or down from the CPC. And I believe that's the time we should take our vote.
Would you like to hear from Ms. Clark?
Well, Sam, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to say that I've attended quite a few of the CPC meetings, and I would say, from the discussions I've heard, I share Ralph's optimism that the CPC will approve this. So I would have no qualms about proving it contingent upon their approval on the next, at their next meeting.
Linda?
As long as they don't feel that we're overstepping our bounds by approving it without, I mean, in some ways, that's where the legislation reads. We shouldn't be doing this.
I have to justify that when I go to, that, that ball is in my court. I have to justify that when I go to the, the, the Community Preservation Committee on Thursday night. And I have to tell them why I made this decision. And I made this decision out of respect for Ms. Clark and the community, and the Falmouth Affordable, I mean, the Falmouth Housing Corporation, because there have been so many delays recently, in addition to the long two years, recently. Just switching from a, just switching from a loan to a, to a grant has taken several weeks. And I really would like to give, I really would recommend that you listen to Ms. Clark, and I think she could be very concise about these recent delays, and why she probably is in favor of what I, what I'm doing here.
I have no problem with actually voting the way it is, as long as there's an apology expressed to the CPC that we're voting first. As long as they don't feel
I, I believe, I believe it gives a message if we vote first, when it says that we will vote after their recommendation. I think we're taking it out of context. It is, the statement is made, it's contingent upon the recommendation from the CPC, and we don't have that. But we do have another meeting in two weeks, and we will know what the consideration
So we need to know what the urgency is.
That's what, that's my
And maybe Linda can explain that to us.
I think Mrs. Clark can, can explain the urgency, and probably has to do with the lenders in this situation. Thank you very much.
I think there are five lenders, so there are five or six lenders, which is really unusual, isn't it? Go ahead, welcome, Linda.
There is a great few. Linda Clark, President of Falmouth Housing Corporation. The urgency for this vote this evening, I have an appointment in Boston with Massachusetts Housing Partnership, who's our permanent lender. They've been with us this entire time. We need to get a commitment of the $540,000. They've been patient. In order to move things along, we cannot close on our construction loan unless we have a permanent lender. Now, MHP is going to be making a decision tomorrow, and if I can go into a meeting and let them know that the board has approved the $540,000 grant, contingent on CPC, and we all understand that they voted on it before, so I'm very confident they will vote in favor of it again. So, that's the urgency. I, I have an appointment tomorrow at 2:00 in Boston. That's the urgency.
Wasn't the possibility that you could just call a meeting of the CPC, knowing you were going to be here, to ask for our vote? And you could have had a vote before? From the time that you know, a vote before Monday night, tonight? Couldn't you have gotten a vote from the CPC previous?
They meet
Call an emergency, call an emergency meeting?
Absol- absolutely not.
Oh, you can't
The town has changed. The ballgame, they've gone from a loan to a grant. And we just, we were just notified of that this last, this last Thursday or Friday. Do you want me to call a meeting on Saturday morning with the Community Preservation Committee? I'm not going to do it.
Oh, okay.
It was just decided Friday evening, that's correct.
There have been stumbling blocks along the way. There's no, from the very beginning, this has been a complex project. And when you have so many lenders involved, that's also not, not easy to do.
And there are lenders, there are stuff.
You know, I think we, what we decided tonight was, and when we heard from Ralph, and, and I know, we understand the fact that we have to find ways of working better together. And I think that's what we plan to do. I think the guidelines, working together with the CPC on the guidelines will help, I think, getting this board up to date on how we got into this in the first place, and why we created this housing fund, not just because it bypassed, it doesn't really bypass town meeting, because they actually approve it in advance. And, but I think we need to have more discussion about this whole process, and we need to all get up to speed on, now it's, the CPC now is, has some urgency with the funds available to begin to, to get some more affordable housing projects. And there have been one or two already, this is a third, and another one's coming up. So things are moving forward the way they should. And we just need to all get up to speed and make the process workable, and one that, where both boards can be accountable for their own responsibilities in terms of making this program work well. Those would be
One more question, Linda.
Sure.
Excuse me. And just saying that your meeting is tomorrow on Tuesday?
Yes.
And you knew this at what time? Or what day did you know you were going into Boston?
It was two weeks ago, we did have, we were on the agenda on the 25th of August, and it was tabled. So we've, we've kind of
So there's been CPC meetings since you knew that you were going to Boston tomorrow?
I don't believe so.
Oh, there's no, there hasn't?
Now, the thing about
Not even
Well, what happened two weeks, it was on our agenda two weeks ago, and we had to table it, because there were changes to the loan documents that had to be made, because of, of the lenders. The, the town was subordinated in, in those documents, where the town should not have been subordinated. This is really a complex issue.
Really is.
So all those documents had to be redone. So they were all redone, but they were redone after our meeting two weeks ago. And now we're trying to make it go together now, because our meetings don't just happen to coincide. So the idea is, try to get us to do our part tonight, so that they can do their part, and then we can get this thing back on track.
I need, I need to just correct something that you said. You said that the loan documents had been rewritten and all
No, not rewritten. I didn't mean all rewritten, but there were parts of it.
But there aren't any loan documents anymore.
I know. That was, afterward it was done, it was changed.
It's now a grant.
Right.
I think what has happened here is that the frustration of, of moving the process forward with a, with a low, under a loan situation, when in the fact, in the past, we've given grants all the time, very successfully, to the same corporation, when Mr. Murray was the president, was the chairman. The fact that it's switched, switched from loans to a grant has changed the whole ballgame.
Okay. Couple more questions, and we really have to move on.
The thing that we don't want to do is cause delay here by acting precipitously. So my question, very specifically, is, what if the Board of Selectmen were to vote in favor, and then this, the, the meeting on Thursday is with the, is it the CPC?
Yeah.
And what if they were to deny it? Then wouldn't we be in a situation where they could potentially even move to, to derail the project, because they weren't given the proper opportunity to vote as the process is written, which is before the Board of Selectmen? In other words, don't we have the potential here, or do we not? I don't know the answer. I'm asking you, Ralph, for what, if we were to vote in favor, and then the CPC were to vote against, for whatever reason, don't we then create other problems, or do we not?
No, our vote would be invalid, because it's contingent upon approval. So if we voted contingent upon the CPC, and they don't approve it, it's an invalid vote. So everybody goes back to the drawing boards.
Okay.
But we anticipate that that will not happen, because both of us are very anxious to have this project go forward, because it's a really good project. And it's in an area that, you know, where it's needed, and there's so many good things about the project. And there have been so many, I don't want to call them mistakes or errors, complications along the way that has delayed it. We, you know, but the thing is, we just need to move on. So we either need to go along with this. It's not the first time that we would have voted contingent upon another vote. We, we vote occasionally contingent upon, we approve the town manager's authority to do something, contingent upon other things happening. And usually, they do happen. So we're, we're not taking a huge risk here by saying we're doing a contingent upon their vote, because there is, there's no risk. Because if they don't vote it, it's a debt.
And I'm swayed very heavily by Ralph's argument that this was approved before by the CPC.
Yes.
And grants have, and by us.
Well, not you particularly, but your predecessor.
And grants have been approved before. The only thing that was not specifically approved before was this project under grant.
Correct.
But those individual pieces have been approved a number of different times, and that's what sways me, saying, well, then I, I'm okay with moving forward.
Is the only purpose for using the words "recommendation" from CPC, the only purpose of that is then that CPC has voted against it? Is that, is that the only reason for that kind of wording?
The, the reason for the wording is, is that in order to make this valid, the CPC has to vote in favor of it. And if they don't, then the whole, the whole project is invalid. So that's the purpose, is because they need to get this decision made. Linda needs to let the lender know that the Board of Selectmen, we control the funds, that we are willing to release these funds. So, and there's really no risk because of the wording. The wording says it's contingent upon, and if that doesn't happen, that's the end of it, end of story. But it does give, it's a huge lesson for all of us to try to do our job a little bit better, and foresee some of these complications that come down. And, and, what can I say? But it's an important project, and we should be behind it.
Oh, I have no problem with the importance of being behind it.
It's a timeline.
I, well, I just have it, put it in order. If things have been out of order for years, and there's been mistakes, I'm just saying, I'm looking at one more. And then I'm asked to vote for something that I approve of, absolutely approve of it. But I just thought we could follow what we have, what we have said we would follow. So my vote would be that I say that we should wait for our next meeting after, exactly as it says. As far as this project, I'm 100% for.
And the only problem with us not doing it is because tomorrow Linda Clark meets with the mutual lender.
And I say, everybody knew that.
Yeah, well, that's true.
The word "recommendation" is in the legislation, by the way. The word "recommendation" is in the legislation.
All right. I think we've had enough discussion. Do you all agree that we should end the discussion and move forward? So does anybody care to make a motion?
I did.
You already have?
Twenty minutes ago.
You did? Could you restate your motion, please? Oh, we have to read the whole thing.
With the Board of Selectmen, being the Board of Trustees of the Falmouth Housing Fund, vote toward $540,000 to Falmouth Housing Corporation.
All the way down, to the very end.
For the benefit of the Antatika Woods Affordable Housing Project, this award is in the form of a grant for the purposes of, one, reimbursement of pre-development costs for the design and engineering of the project in the amount not to exceed $100,000; and, two, reimbursement of construction costs in the amount not to exceed $440,000. This vote on the board does not specify a timely award, but it is agreed that time is of the essence. This vote is contingent upon a positive recommendation from the CPC.
Second.
Okay, any? No. Please. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Unanimous. And thank you all very much. Thank you, Ralph. Thank you, Linda. And amen. I guess we should sign this.
Certainly.
I can sign the motion.
You need to add that phrase to it.
Which, yes.
You want the, the bottom paragraph also?
Uh, yeah, the bottom paragraph is, just a further clarifier, it's not a
It's not a
Inconsistent.
Okay, well, I'll further clarify for the public to hear that, "Pre-development disbursements are contingent upon receipt of vendor contract agreements, invoices, and canceled check. Falmouth Housing Corporation will agree that these plans will become property of the town if for any reason the project was not completed. Construction grant disbursements will have 50% completion, architect certification, and 100% occupancy permit, contingent on the modification of the Subordination Clause Number 14 from the Cape Cod Five Commitment Letter."
And you need to add to that contingent upon a vote. Is it in there?
Yeah, it's in the
Okay, great. All right. Next item is a request for an off-premise sign from the Falmouth Prevention Partnership. These are two off-premise signs, one at the police department and one at the fire department. And I think, as you, you have read in your packet, that we have approved these before. This is for the informing the public of the Prescription Drug Takeback Day, and it, I, this year, I'm not exactly sure when it's going to, September 27.
I will move approval of the off-premise sign for the Falmouth Prevention Partnership.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous. And this is, this is one that was just added today, and the reason is, is because the event is occurring next weekend. And this is an off-premise sign for the Falmouth Rotary Club Annual Craft Fair, which is at the Marina Park and Banshop. This has happened every year for I don't know how many years. And somehow, there was a delay somewhere along the line, and Bill Kerfoot called today and said that he didn't receive the final approval from Design Review until this morning. And so we have to approve it tonight, because the event is next weekend. So, September 13, 2014.
I move approval of the Rotary Club Annual Craft Show.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Unanimous.
It's actually just approval of the off-premise sign.
I'm sorry, yeah, it is, it's the sign code.
Oh, yes, just a sign that we're approving.
Yes, exactly. Sorry.
Okay. Special events. These, there are three of them, and they're recurring events, and they are recommended by the Events Committee. This is a request for a special event, the Sixth Annual Cedar Signing She-Walk, C-Walk, can't even talk anymore. Pagnoon in Park, Saturday, October 4, 2014. A special event, which is the Third Annual Falmouth Ride of the Wounded Warrior Project, National Ride. And this is Carol Kenny, who is here tonight, thank you, Carol, which is on the bike path, and it's being held on Thursday, September 25, 2014. I think it will be, begin at the North Falmouth, at the entrance to the bike path in North Falmouth at 10:00 AM?
9:30.
9:30 AM. And that, each of the crossings of the bike path along the way, there will be people there encouraging, and thanking, and honoring all the wounded veterans who are who are in Carol, do you want to just say something about it, if you want? Are you okay? Okay, good.
I, can I just mention?
Yes.
We were there last year with it, it's a really surprisingly popular event, and the gentlemen that are, you know, that do the rides, or a lot of police, who go in their own time, and it just is a real tribute, so, you know.
There are a lot of volunteer effort. The Falmouth Fire Department, the police, all volunteer their time.
And people love it, that, you know, there are kids out, dog walkers, I mean, it really is a good time.
Falmouth High School, North Falmouth School, Falmouth Academy will be out again this year.
And so we encourage people to, see?
I like to say.
We encourage people, anybody, community, people in the community, to, to be at the crossings of the bike path, if you can't be at
Or anywhere in between.
There, and anywhere along the line, to just wave and encourage the, our wounded warriors. And the last request is for the Buzzards Bay Watershed Ride, the Buzzards Bay Coalition, which is on the bike path, and that's Sunday, October 5, 2014. So the recommendation is to approve all three.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just had one quick question, and this is more administrative. Last Last year, or the first half of this year, after we had the Special Events Committee, there was a sheet that we usually got about the Special Events Committee checking off what they had done.
Oh, yeah.
That I liked to see partly because it did list what other events were happening in that weekend. And would like to get that, see if we can get that list back on these, just because I do notice there was one time where there's an event happening on Saturday, rain date Sunday. And that gave us information whether something else was happening on Sunday as the potential conflict.
For a conflict.
Yeah.
We'll get you that calendar.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Unanimous. We've had the public hearing. Now we'll move to business. And the first item on the business is to discuss and vote the five-year strategic plan. And I want to thank those who, Heather asked for comments, and I know she got some comments from some of us. And I think, Madam Chairman. Yes, Heather.
I think you have, unless, I think the manager sent a fresh copy down that incorporates comments from the selectmen that offered them. And those were incorporated this afternoon. So those should be reflected in the current draft. They're all scriveners and none, none real content.
So we spent quite a bit of time on this, and we've had an opportunity to, to look at it again.
Not to pat our back, hit our own backs, backs too much. I actually think it's a document that we can be very proud of and give some real clear message to the different departments as to at least what our strategic strategies are that we have moving forward. And I do like the fact that we've also keep narrowing it down and making it more and more concise and saying, these are the bullets that we really want to work on.
And also that we've accomplished, you know, goals. The town manager pointed out at the strategic meeting, the, the tasks that were in fact already completed, which, you know, it's kind of a, I think, a good message to the folks that are interested to check the milestones and see where we're going and where we're, you know, where we're headed.
Right.
I move approval of the five-year strategic plan as presented here in the draft form.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Unanimous. Great. Good job, everybody. Heather, Julian.
Thank you.
Were members, that was. That was a very, very good, we meet on a off day. And we usually meet for a few hours with a consultant and, and with Heather and Julian and members of the board. And we take our goals and our plan from the previous year. And we, we review it and we update it and we come up with a revised plan for the next year. So it's very helpful, it's certainly very helpful for the town manager and the staff to know what the direction is. It provides that kind of direction for department heads in terms of where they, their departments can feed into that plan and, and help to execute the, the tasks that are required to reach those goals. So it's a really good process and I think the town's been doing it for several years now. And it's worked pretty well. Okay, next we have some interviews for committees. The Human Services Committee has, has a few vacancies, but we actually have an applicant tonight for one of those vacancies, Elizabeth Page. Elizabeth, would you like to come to the microphone and tell us why you're interested in the Human Services Committee?
I was invited.
That's great. You were recruited. That's what we like to hear.
I've, I've lived in Falmouth over 40 years. And I've participated in all different activities here. And I'm so excited to be part of, to part of everything in Falmouth. And I think that my background just gives me a lot of helpful information. But I feel very awestruck by the other people on the committee. And I've learned so much from them. So I, it's pretty selfish of me to be.
I, I have to say, I, I'm a Ms. Page fan. I mean, just working with her, you know, through the high school, I mean, she's just touched so many kids' lives and just through the high school. And I see you've had many other types of nursing experience. And it, you know, really shows the investment that professionals, nurses in your case, have in the community. And then to, to even be giving more as, you know, with the vast depth of your experience after so many years, it really is going to add to the committee. So I'm pleased to see you again.
Well, thank you.
Anybody else have questions for Ms. Page?
Just appreciation.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate what you're all doing. I've been trying to do this every other week.
Well, Elizabeth, I'm glad you applied and came forward and maybe kind of watched a little bit of what happens with selectmen. But I think that your background is certainly matches with the position you'd like to have.
Thank you.
I would move that we appoint Elizabeth Page to the Human Services Committee to the term expiring June 30th, 2017.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Unanimous. And next is the Historic District Commission. They also have three vacancies. And George Nickerson. Yes. Good evening, Mr. Nickerson.
Good evening.
Would you like to go to the microphone and tell us about your interest in the Historic District Commission?
Well, first, I got a phone call from a.
You were recruited.
I was, from a professional acquaintance, from a lady who told me about, another gentleman I knew about was on the committee, his term was coming up. And that would I be interested in, you know, kind of bringing my services and experiences to the committee, which I am. And I have over 40 years of experience as a builder, carpenter, and builder here in Falmouth. And I worked on the restoration of Highfield Hall for 14 months. And I'm presently restoring another building on the Village Green. And I think I would bring a lot of practical experience, hands-on experience, that would be very valuable to the committee.
Doug?
My question's more curiosity than really interviewing you for this. But I'm curious as to how the Historic District Commission deals with fixing up a project where new materials are not authentic but better than the old materials.
I think we need to work with the people that are buying properties that need resuscitation, if you will, and restoration. And using new materials will give them longevity. Many of traditional materials that are farmed, that are green and can be, you know, farmed, I should say, don't have the life that they used to have, whereas these newer materials do. But I think also there's a balance between, trim systems are one of the most expensive systems on a house, on the exterior. And if we balance that out with traditional sidewall materials, we get a balance that the look has an authenticity to it. Whereas, you know, using materials that may only have a 20-year life, somebody may not take on a project, might say, well, though I have the means and the wherewithal, I may not really want to engage in this project. You know? Yes.
Becky? Just as a personal opinion, if you live in a historical district and you think that you would like to have your power coming into your hall from either solar or from turbine, but you're in a historical district, you're allowed to have that in your neighborhood. But what would be your opinion as a historical committee member, allowing something that would never have been thought of when that house was built?
Well, are we talking a turbine that is in a remote location and then?
Yes.
And bringing that power in?
You wouldn't say it. That's right.
All right. If we're talking a turbine in a remote location, or the town turbine providing electricity and feeding it into the grid, if the person was tapping into the grid.
Well, there are several personal turbines in Falmouth.
Yes, that's true.
And I'm just saying, it's, it's just a much smaller version, and you never see it.
We had a lot of windmills in this town at one time pumping water for, for salt pans. And I think that if the project is scaled appropriately, it could fit in, it could very well fit in. And I think that if solar, and I used to, I've installed solar systems in the past, 20, 25, 30 years ago, actually, when they first were coming in, they were the fresh thing. And we were doing them in a different way than they are now down with piezoelectric. But if it's on the south side of the house, if it's on the side, it's going to get the maximum solar exposure. And it's not the street side, it's not what's going to be visible. We could, I think we could work with that. I think we could work with those people.
I just hear that as a complaint from people who have a home in a historical area. They're enormous homes, they've got several acres of land. And it's having the issue with the historical commission, so that's why I.
It can, it can be done. It can be balanced out. It could be, maybe you don't put it on the, if you had the property, maybe you don't put it on the structure. You've actually set it up on a, on a remote structure so it gets appropriate exposure. But it's, you know, its exposure to the road, to the street, to the public is minimalized. I think we could work, I think we can work with those people. And we ought to work with those people. We're in the 21st century, you know? We're moving forward.
I think you just said your first protest.
Why, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No. Thank you very much, Mr. Nickerson.
Well, thank you all. Good evening.
I would move the appointment of George Nickerson to the Historic District Commission, term ending June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nickerson. Now, the Energy Committee. Mr. Marchella?
I don't see him here, but I am the liaison and I'd be happy to, to speak for a minute. I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Marchella, who has been with the committee for quite a long time as an adjunct or, you know, visitor, and also worked with the, the committee chair. And in the meeting that I attended with him, I saw him to be an, just an incredibly proficient expert on all subjects, energy. I mean, he's, he's really a nice balance to the committee, which has lots of older folks who have a lot of experience. And he is just the cutting-edge, right-out-of-school young guy, lots of vim and vigor and ideas. And also worked with Megan, who's a former chair. And so I, I think he would be a wonderful addition, just from my short time meeting him.
And he is now a full-time resident?
He, he does travel with his job. And he's, he is so committed to this idea that he has plans to, whatever, Skype or he's that, even when he's away, he, for his job, he has plans to continue to be active in the committee. And he also sets his deadlines for committee projects so that he can quickly get things done before he even has to go abroad. So this is, this is a guy who I think could work it out.
I just want to make sure that he fits the qualifications of being a resident in.
Yeah, because you can only participate remotely. Well, we don't have a remote participation policy, which we should do pretty soon, I would think, because most towns have it. But if we had it, usually you can only do that about twice a year. You can't do it all the time.
Right.
But, but we should, this time around, maybe we have a different board come up with a remote participation policy. So we should ask Mr. Marchella to come at another night, perhaps at our next meeting?
I think, because we need to interview the.
Very good.
Is that what you're going to say, Becky?
Yes, I, it's, my, I guess the question we need to hear from him is how much time can you put in on this position?
And we need to meet him, too.
And it's, it's always, that's always good.
Right. I agree. Okay, now we'll move to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. They also have some vacancies. And we have one applicant, Mr. Fineran.
Mark Fineran, Precinct 6.
So would you like to tell us of your interest in the committee?
As you probably know, I've always had an interest in what goes on at the waste management facility. I've had a few petitioner's articles relating to the waste management facility. One of them, which a year and a half ago was supposed to assign a solid waste manager to the waste management facility, which still has not been done, which kind of says that maybe we do need a watchman or the warrant. I still see problems with the management there. Anytime I go, I see things going out that shouldn't go out. There are people there that make money off of the, well, it's a fact, the scrap metal piles. Excuse me?
I, I don't approve that accusation.
Oh, well, I'm there all the time. I'm, I'm aware that it's true.
Well, Mr. Fineran, we are interested in, or what are some ideas you have?
Constructive criticism, that's what I'm giving.
No, we're not interested in constructive criticism. We're interested in what ideas you might have to make things work better at the solid waste. What you can contribute from your own personal experience to make this a better place.
I think it needs to be managed better. I think the outflow from the place should be stopped. For instance.
Wait a minute, you've already spoken to that. Isn't that, wouldn't you just call the police? What, if there's?
Oh, there, there's, there's nothing done about, there's, it's just not done. I'll give you another, for instance, at the pick of the litter. Anytime anybody brings in an electrical appliance, there are people that hang there, make their secondary income off of scrap metals. I mean, you can bring in a radio, a TV, anything, and within 15 minutes, the cord is cut off it. I mean, it really needs to be managed better. Those are town assets, which are going out the door. I think it should come to an end. It's, it's been going on for too long.
But is this within the scope of the, of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee?
Absolutely. Why wouldn't it be? I'm advising you what I think now. I mean, it's, it's, it's just wrong. I mean, you know, I mean, we know in the past that there was 104 100-yard containers of metal that went out there, we never got paid for. I mean, it needs to be tightened up.
With respect.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's go down and see who has.
I have two questions. And so as a member of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, what could you do as a member to?
Well, I, as I said, I think it should be recommended that they manage the facility better. Why should town assets keep going out the door?
So as a member of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, you'd recommend to the selectmen that we ask the facility to be managed better? That would be your recommendation from?
Well, there's a, there's already a, a town meeting voted for a solid waste manager a year and a half ago, and it's not there. I mean, these things would be the job of that manager.
Well, I'm just trying to understand what, as a member of the committee, what would you do?
What would I do? I would recommend to you that you manage this facility better.
Okay.
That people that are, that are maintaining their, their lifestyle off of town assets be controlled.
The second question I have is that on our application, we ask you to list relevant affiliation and work and personal experiences. And your answer is too many to list. And I'm saying, I find that a little insulting that you just can't give us maybe three or four examples of specific things that we can consider in our application. The respect that you were asking in an application to give a little bit of time and energy to, could you right now, since you have some time, give me three pieces of your work or personal experience that would be relevant to help you be a good job, good member of this committee?
I believe I have three town meeting articles relative to the dump. I mean, you see me here every week. I mean, I voice my opinions on many, many things that go on in this town. I mean, it's not like I'm somebody just coming in off the street. You're aware of who I am.
I know, but I'd just like to, you know, an official application for, there's an application form for a commission. I would love to have a serious answer to the question, saying, what personal work experience do you have? Not who am I, but this is my work and personal experience that is relevant to being on this committee. And so I'm going to give you.
Well, as I said, I just don't, I've, I've sponsored about three articles relative As I said, I just don't, I've, I've sponsored about three articles relative to the dump.
But that's not work.
I mean, I am completely familiar with scrap metal and how it works, where it goes, what kind of money you can get for it.
Okay, but could you make it.
Doesn't, isn't that part, isn't that what you're asking?
I mean, what you're saying is, I know a lot about metal, could you say, because I'm a metal contractor for 10 years? That would be a, a fact, I could say, oh, here's someone who knows a lot about metal, as opposed to what you're saying is, I know a lot about metal.
Right.
That doesn't, that doesn't, I mean, I could say, I know a lot about being a dentist. I could say that, but it wouldn't be any, have any validity of, of a fact that I could.
Were you at town meeting? I mean, I gave an extensive presentation on, on metal, on scrap metal.
But I have no.
I have sold this stuff for the last 40 years.
Okay, that piece of information is, is great. The fact that you made a presentation at town meeting, I have no idea where your information came from. It was just.
Well, if you paid attention, it came from the steel business briefing, which I joined, it came from many trade publications, it came from conversations with the vendors themselves, it came from me going to Barnstable and getting all their metal figures for the last five years and incorporating them into my town meeting presentation. I believe I know as much about that facility and how it operates as, as any layman in this town.
And that's the information I'm looking forward to be on in an application, saying, because I have been working in steel business for 30 years, and then I.
No, I didn't say, I mean, I've done it before, I know people that do it every day. And as I say, I see the stuff going out every day.
But that's not a work and personal experience, so that's, I'm just like.
It's, it's experience. I mean, that's what you want in someone, is the experience and knowledge. I mean, I have knowledge of someone that was making $2,000 to $4,000 a week peeling stuff out of that scrap metal pile.
Would you be able to amend your application to include some specifics in terms of the requirements we have to assess? For example, everything that, that my colleague just requested, including particular skills that you feel will add to the committee or board, maybe just fill out the application so that we can make a better assessment?
So, are you telling me that you haven't been paying attention to what I've been doing over the last years?
I'm asking you a question. Would you be able to amend your application to include the specific answers to the application questions?
Sure, it'd take a whole nother shoe, but yeah, I could. I mean, I, I've given in-depth presentations on the dump, on the scrap metal issue, on many aspects of, I mean, I'm there all the time. You, you know I have a great interest in it.
Sam, you have a question?
Yeah, I think, I think what we're asking for is some objective criteria that tells us that you have experience other than your opinion. It's like, you know, if somebody writes a position paper, they can give their opinion, but nobody's going to give a lot of credence to it unless there's some supporting evidence. And I think that's what we're asking for. What's the evidence that, what you're giving to us as opinions actually has some credible backing?
Again, I'll ask you, as I've asked them, did you see any of my town meeting presentations? They were involved, they were in depth. I got my information from numerous places, from trade journals, I showed you graphs and figures. I mean, it's not that difficult, not for me anyhow.
Yeah, I think to get to the, to the question here, we're talking about his participation as a member of the committee. So, you don't drive the agenda, obviously you can make suggestions, but you have an agenda to operate from. And I'm assuming that the chair of the committee provides a discussion agenda for the members. And my question is, and I've probably asked you that before, is how well do you participate in group discussion? And how well do you assert your own ideas, and, and how well do you listen to other people's ideas, so that you end up with something that a committee can agree with?
Quite well.
Well, that's.
I mean, I've been to dozens of those meetings, I participate. I've tried to push my ideas forward. I think they need some new blood, I think things need to change. We have $200,000 sitting in an account from a debt exclusion almost four years ago, which hasn't, hasn't been spent, it was earmarked for that facility, and the place is just falling apart. Nothing is done to it. Now, there's, those who care about it like I do, have increased concern that something may happen to that facility in the next few years. It's been degraded over the last few years. I mean, it's obvious to anyone. I mean, I have a definite interest in this place, and you seem to have definite interests in not placing me on any committee.
What is your definite interest? I mean, besides the fact that you want to recommend us to tell them to run it better? What, could you be more specific, what your definite interest is? Is it beyond their losing money that they shouldn't?
My interest is in this town, and to see it run as well as can be reasonably expected, I do not think that is happening at the dump, and there are many people who share that opinion. I mean, town meeting, again, I'll say, town meeting voting, town meeting voted for a solid waste manager. It's still, it still hasn't occurred.
Do you know why?
I don't really think there is enough concern over that facility as a town asset.
Let me ask you another.
I think it's, it's.
This is an advisory committee, so what do you understand to be the mission of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee? What is its role and purpose?
Well, it's supposed to advise on how the dump is run. I mean, just as town meeting advised to hire a manager, it still hasn't been done. There's, there are definite flaws in, in how the facility is, is operated.
The other question I have is concerning your work on the committee. If the committee was moving forward and voted as a group to support pay-as-you-thrown as an option, how would you respond?
Currently, I wouldn't be in favor of that at all.
I know, I'm saying, you're on the committee, they've met for three months, and they've voted to go that way.
I'm not aware that they have.
No, no.
Am I not free to vote my conscience, or what?
I'm saying, hypothetical situation.
I'd vote against it.
And you voted against it. You're on the committee, and the committee voted to do so with your vote against it. What would you do?
I, I was on the losing side of the vote, happens all the time. They're unanimous votes, well, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure they'd be preferred, but that's just not the way life works.
So, then how would you proceed?
On to the next issue.
Okay.
I mean, it's not that difficult.
Okay.
And I'd like to also add that none of these openings are on the town website again. Would be better if they were posted, maybe you would get more people interested.
Becky?
With your occupation each day, how much time do you have to give to this position?
All the time that's necessary.
How many hours would you be at work and then have this time?
This is at night, on a Tuesday night, once a month.
And then you don't have any, anything else to do with it after that point?
Anything else to do with?
Mm-hmm. Any?
Well, I, I was there Saturday. I mean, sure I do. I mean, I have plenty of time for this town. Look how much time I'm, I put into this town. You think I can't come up with another three hours a, a month?
What is the pleasure of the board?
I continue to object to our application form not being taken seriously, as I wish it would, but despite that, I would move to appoint Mark Finneran to the Solid Waste Advisor Committee, the term extended, ending June 30th, 2017.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? No. So, do I understand there are three in favor and two opposed? So, what's up?
Yeah, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next is the Substance Abuse Commission. Donna Mello, yes, hello. Please come and, and tell us about your interest in the Substance Abuse Commission, Committee, rather.
Well, my name is Donna Mello, I was born and raised in Falmouth, so I've lived my whole life here. And I care very deeply about Falmouth, and I'm very concerned about the opiate problem that we're all experiencing all across the Cape and nationwide. I worked for the AIDS Support Group of Cape Cod, excuse me, 14 and a half years for, as a HIV case manager, so many of my clients have substance abuse issues, current or past. And for the last year and a half, I've been the Harm Reduction Manager at the AIDS Support Group, so I worked with individuals who are injection drug users around safety issues, around contracting or spreading HIV and Hep C. I'm a licensed alcohol and drug counselor, I'm a certified recovery coach, and probably more important, I have a, my oldest son is a recovering addict with two years sobriety. So, I know that there's a vacancy on the board, it's something that I really care about. I didn't answer how many hours I would have to donate to the organization, I'm not really sure how much it's required, but I'm very passionate about it, and I'll give everything I can to it.
Great. Questions? I see Karen is here. Are you, are you here?
I'm here.
Good. I'm sure you're here because Donna has applied, is that right? Am I?
Donna, and also Elizabeth Page, I'm supporting both of their.
Great, okay. Any questions for Donna? Becky?
I would just make a comment, that it's a, in reading the application, I just wanted to meet the person that matched it. So, it's very nice meeting you, it's an excellent application, and I wish you well.
Thank you very much.
Can I just have a quick?
Sure.
I've attended one meeting, and the, the group already is a well-oiled machine, and you attended that meeting just to kind of add what you could, and it, it just is really important that we have that kind of experience in force and dedication to this important subject at this time, it really is. So, thank you.
Thank you.
How many people are on the committee right now? Do we know?
How many?
How many people are on the committee right now?
Five, I believe.
And we have six vacancies, so we actually need to fill this vacancy to give a quorum. Is there 11?
We're down to nine, actually, are.
The membership's nine?
Membership is nine.
Okay, great.
And you have?
Five.
Five.
Five. Okay. Five vacancies or five people?
Five people.
Five people, oh, that's good, so this will, she'll be, you'll be the sixth member then.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. All right. What is the pleasure of the board?
I would move the appointment of Donna Mello to the Substance Abuse Committee, for the term ending June 30th, 2017.
A second.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for offering your services, I'm sure they're all very pleased. And next, we have the Coastal Pond Management Committee report. The Coastal Management Committee now has a quorum, and this has been a plan that has been in the works for some time, and we thought this would be a good opportunity for the committee members to share with the board, give us an update on the plan, so that we know what it is, and we have, can have a discussion, so that at another meeting, hopefully we'll be able to, if we need to approve the plan, which I believe we do, that we can have that, be able to do that in the very near future. So, George, can you give us an update, if you would?
Okay, I'll start off by saying I need your help, I always say that.
Yes, you do.
And thank you for inviting me, and you're a Falmouth Town Meeting Member. I want to start off by saying, this is just an intro, because Charles McCaffrey is going to take off and, and explain this in detail, because he's an, an expert at this. Not that I'm not, but he's many times better than I am. The Falmouth Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan is key to our town, and as you know, time is going to pass, there's going to be a lot of money thrown at it, but, which is going to follow this, and what we're trying to start, is we're going to have a Coastal Pond Management Committee. Just because we have sewage and we're taking care of our water, we have to follow it up with a plan. You can't let it go adrift. Falmouth is going to be one of the few towns in the state that's going to have a management plan. Moorings, it's going to be water quality, docks, about approval through the Conservation Commission. All of these things are not by ourselves, we just willy-nilly don't go out there and, and see if we can get this changed. We work through the selectmen, and we also work through the harbor master, we have already. So, I want to make that clear right from the start. We don't change the rules because we're never going to get anywhere. But what we're looking forward to, what avenue do we take? Would it be the selectmen, or town meeting, or both? So, with that in mind, I'd like to present Charles McCaffrey and have him give a overview of what we've done so far.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Charlie.
Thank you. Charlie McCaffrey, Precinct 5, member of the Coastal Ponds Management Committee. I have to begin with an apology. I had a PowerPoint presentation, which I didn't intend to give, what I wanted to do was to give you a printed copy to follow, which I think sometimes works better, and I made a terrible mistake in doing the PowerPoint. I used white lettering on a black background, and when I asked it to be printed, there were screams that it's just going to consume huge amounts of black ink to color every page. So, I apologize, I will forward to each of you by email the PowerPoint to read, and then, as well, a, the written document that we hope you will approve. But in looking at this, let me give you highlights, the significant, a little bit on the history and the significant recommendations that will be contained in the document. Several years ago, we began the process, I know some of you have heard this before, but with a survey of the methane habitat. If we're going to manage our harbors, we need to know not just water quality, but we need to know the health of the, the lands under the water, because they're so important to the resource values that we derive from our harbors. So, a consulting firm did a detailed survey of Green Pond, 158 samples, and from that, they produced six maps. The existing, I'm sorry, four, four maps. The existing quality of shellfish habitat in three gradations, high, medium, and low, based on their analysis, their samples. They also looked at eelgrass, and that, there was almost nothing left, so that was an easy map to do. Then, knowing at the time that the town was embarking on its efforts to improve water quality and the need to reduce excess nutrients, they were asked to, what would be the habitat values that you could project from your samples if we addressed the nutrient problem? So, where would we expect shellfish habitats to improve from poor to medium, or from medium to high? And where could we expect, over time, that we might get some eelgrass restoration, either on its own or with some assistance through planting? So, they did that map, and you'll see these maps, they're nice, simple colored maps, and you've seen them in some other presentations. That we used as a starting point to then analyze the variety of issues that affect harbor management. We did not look in any serious way at water quality itself, because that was being addressed by the Water Quality Management Committee. But we looked at the issues of wetlands, flooding and erosion, public access, aesthetic quality, a whole range of uses, boating, docks. We hired, with assistance from money provided by the CPC, the Urban Harbors Institute at the University of Massachusetts, to prepare a detailed report and recommendations. That 100-page report is available and will be as background to the report we ask you to adopt. We will reduce those recommendations, plus some we have developed since then, which I will highlight, into approximately a 10-page report that would be the policy plan that we would ask you to adopt. So, there'll be a series of recommendations, some of which will be non-controversial, such as looking to perhaps increase boating access through, through kayak or commuter launch at one spot in the harbor. Working with Department of Transportation, Mass. Department of Transportation, the next time they make any improvements on 28, the need to improve fish passage under Route 28 to the pond above Green Pond. One concept that you will see in the report is to begin to look at marine spatial planning. It's not zoning, but it's somewhat analogous. So, we looked at Green Pond, and we said, there's obvious areas where our priorities should be marine preservation. In this area, which is in the southwest corner, no active uses. Mainly it would be for shellfish spawning, and in the upper reaches. And in the upper reaches where the highway is, fish passage. So, certain small areas where preservation is the priority in guiding decision-making. At this stage, we're not saying it's a regulation like a zoning, but it would be a guide for decision-making. Marine conservation areas, which would be a balance between resource protection and normal uses. This would include most of that pond, as you're familiar with, above the bridge. So, in that area, you would have docks accessory to residential uses. You would have moorings. Those would be the main obvious uses and other related uses. And then marine development, which would be around the bridge, where you would have marinas, boat launches, dredging would occur in channels, more intensive uses. We've designed this approach for Green Pond, but our expectation is that with some adaptation, it could become a model that we could use in all of our major bays and harbors. So, that's one concept you'll see in what you will get within the next day or so. And we will answer questions after you've looked at it when we ask you to consider adopting it. The second major area in the recommendations deals with a set of mooring recommendations. Currently, there... in Green Pond, there are a substantial number of moorings. We do not propose that they be reduced, but we propose that they be, over time, concentrated and avoid certain areas, such as the areas where we expect shellfish habitat to improve following water quality improvements. Or in some areas where we already have higher-quality shellfish habitat, we would say, as much as possible, move the moorings to other areas. This we recommend being done over time. In addition, you'll see a recommendation that, over time, that the mooring tackle used would be converted to what are referred to as conservation moorings, which are ones that do not drag along the bottom, which could cause harm to the bent湖 habitat and particularly in some areas where you might expect eelgrass to grow. Again, the recommendation was that these be timed and to coincide with decisions about making water quality improvements. As George said, if we spend substantial funds, even at our adaptive approach, we will be spending substantial money and commit other commitments. That we want to not lose the benefits of water quality by then allowing uses to continue that interfere with the resource or interfere with each other. The other main issue is, if you agree with the plan, how do we put it into effect? And there are several options. I think I identified about eight options in which it could be implemented. Two of those are within your purview. One is there are specific section in town code that talks about selectmen adopted harbor management plans that would serve as a guide to the harbor master in regulation and establishment of moorings. So, we would ask you to adopt that, if you agree with the recommendations, as a harbor management plan pursuant to that section of town code. We would also ask you to adopt it as a statement of town policy. That has a secondary benefit that it restricts somewhat the decisions of the state, the Commonwealth, under Chapter 91. It restricts their abilities to act contrary to what the Conservation Commission or you might do in reaching your decisions, as you just did tonight on the pier. And that has happened in many communities. It can be a problem. In addition, it could ultimately be, and this is incorporated within the comprehensive plan as that's adopted, we could, under Massachusetts legislation, submit it to the State Office of Coastal Zone Management for them to approve it as a harbor management plan pursuant to the Mass CZM program. When I've spoken, and they haven't been encouraging us to do that, they're sort of reserving that for major harbors. But it has a strong benefit of requiring state compliance with an adopted harbor management plan that's stronger than the one I referred to, where you adopted only a state as town We would probably not want to refer to Massachusetts for approval until we had a set of them. In other words, we have... you charged us with preparing harbor management plans for all 14 harbors. So, if we were to submit it to the state, they would appreciate it if we did it, not as 14 separate proposals, but as a two or three groupings of harbors. I would add that we are in the process of completing work on Eel Pond and West Falmouth Harbor, so that within the next several months, we could have a similar document available for those two harbors for you to consider. So, that's where we are. And I'm sure you'll have more questions once you've looked at the material. When I put it with a white background, so it can be more easily printed.
That would be nice. Could you define pond? When you say coastal pond management, what is a pond?
Well, they're the ones that we name as ponds.
So, you decide what a pond is?
Well, no. There are 14 ponds that are specified in the charge to the committee. So, it's Wacoit, Born, Eel, Green, Gray, Little... I don't even think Little is... I'm not sure Little is there, but Falmouth Harbor, Woods Hole, Quisset, West Falmouth, Wild Harbor, McGanseth. Somehow, that's supposed to come up with 14, but I may have missed one or...
And how is it that those 14 were determined to be part of the management?
Because of the... their active use within the town. And both they're actively used and they contain significant resource values, and that the management of our ponds is divided among several entities. And one charge was to develop a plan that could facilitate coordination among the various entities that are involved.
Are you talking like the Water Waste Committee?
We've presented to the Water Waste Committee, so that's one obvious role. We've worked with... the wastewater committee has come to our meetings and we've provided them all of the information. So, they're... and the conservation. And the way you structured our committee, it does have... one of our members has to be a member of the wastewater, one of the planning board, and one of the conservation. We're missing some of those now. But that's... but they have participated. They have been members over the years and have participated. There's been full participation of those representatives on the development of this first plan.
Do you remember a few years ago, we had what we called ADHOC? They were harbor management committees? Anybody remember those? Do you remember them, Chuck? They were... the idea was to develop a management plan for a harbor, like West Falmouth Harbor, Gray Harbor, wherever...
Was that a reference to the moorings?
Yes. It was mostly a reference to moorings.
Yeah, right.
So, that the... a map could be drawn of the location of the moorings to make it more... to make them work better in terms of where they were located?
That was a... a lot of that work, I think, was one-dimensional. It took into account maximizing the space, just looking at moorings, not necessarily taking into account the improvements to the resource area. I mean, at that time, a lot of the resources were really waning.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to kind of clarify some of those...
Those were put into place. There were a number of harbors. I know one was Gray Pond, which was a very active committee.
Right.
And there was a lot of work put into that as well.
Okay. Back to... yes. Becky, you had a question?
Do you have a budget with this? Do you present any type of a budget?
No.
I think that's...
Most of the recommendations are more, you know, policy and decision. For example, I think you just... and you regularly review wetlands, piers, and docks. But you're doing it without any standards, criteria, guidance. One of the objective of this would be to provide you with some objective criteria and guidance in making your decisions.
Okay. I'm just saying, I'm just listening as you went through that list and I'm figuring what you're doing and I'm saying, oh, they must have a budget. Okay.
Okay. Sam, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm kind of curious to know how you see your committee relating to this report, the Coastal Resources Working Group. This is a report from March of 2003.
Which is... that committee has dissolved as of completing its report. It said Coastal Resource Committee, but that committee, which did a great job, was focused essentially on one major issue, shoreline processes, erosion, and management of the shoreline for that purpose. For example, we make clear in this that sand, which is available dredged from the channel, should be put on the east side of Green Pond. Beach is on the west, and there's a lot of pressure to put sand to the west. But the problem, if you put sand to the west, it just goes back in and you've got severe erosion on the other side. So, you should use the sand that you gain from dredging to mitigate the erosive effect of the channel stabilization that's created through the jetties. Even though that's private beach and the others public, coastal processes dictate that it should go there. That was a major recommendation of that study. It's reflected in the recommendations here for dealing with that issue. And I think we had discussions about a year ago with some members of the Board of Selectmen to talk about how to take the recommendations of that study, the next step in detail. Because they're very good recommendations, but they don't always say exactly, well, what do you have to do next? As you answered, how much is it going to cost? So, it's consistent. Again, we're focused on the pond itself inland from the inlet. This was focused on the shoreline and Minion Sound and the processes that occur.
Anybody else with a question? So, next steps?
Next step, we will get you the report that we would like you to consider. First, I'll send you the summary, which gives you a good overview, which has the clear maps and outline recommendations. We will then send you, within the next week or so, a report that you could... would be the report that we would ask you to adopt, again, pursuant to the specific section of the code relative to harbor management plans and as a statement of town policy.
Okay. And then we'll have another conversation? After we've had an opportunity to really read it through and review it, then we can bring you back in again? And then we can have like...
Yes. I would mention, one obvious question is what type of interaction? We've had several meetings in the community, most recently in January, presented all of this at the East Falmouth School to the East Falmouth Village Association. We had had a similar meeting a year or two before that with that group. And we've had individual meetings with interested parties and groups of people in the area, as well as in town hall.
Thank you, Charlie.
It seems to me this is also going to involve a joint meeting between Conservation Commission and the Water Waste Commission, so that everybody's at the table at the same time when these policies get reviewed.
But that might be a good idea. We haven't had a joint meeting with the Conservation Commission yet.
We actually did have it in our top five plans.
When we were developing this, Betsy Gladfeller was very...
I'm sorry, right?
When we were developing this plan, for most of that time, Betsy Gladfeller was an active participant in the plans.
Yeah, what does our strategic plan say?
That we were hoping to have a meeting this fall with the Conservation Commission and the Water Waste Commission concerning the coastal resiliency issues.
Okay. So, we'll have to get that. Are you all set? Thank you. George, did you want to say something else?
I just wanted to make sure that I haven't disappointed you. We spent some money. We got $50,000 from the CPC and we had $25,000 for West Falmouth. But we didn't get the next step to West Falmouth. They said they want you to prove yourself. So, that's why I'm here. I foresee that this is going to be a very important thing for the future. I really do. Because we can... again, as we talk about sewage and stuff like that, but maintenance is the critical thing. And it's going to take a whole another generation to carry this on. And it's not going to happen in my life, but I want to get at least two ponds under our belt. And Green Pond is one. And West Falmouth would be good. West Falmouth's really changing, by the way.
It really is.
My values of oxygen are better than I anticipated. But maybe it could be just for this year. Next year could be different. It's cooler this year, by the way. The temperature is cooler. You know, it was up to 78 degrees in the previous year. And this year, it's around 70, 71. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. So, we'll be back... we'll be back at you, as I say, and bring some other partners along with you. Thank you for that. George, we really appreciate all your work on behalf of the town and your enormous knowledge you have gained all around the world and bringing it here for us. It's really valuable. Thank you. Same to Charlie, too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our partners here.
Yes, and Doug, absolutely. Okay, thanks. Next item. We're done. The Senior Center Working Group Status Report on the Community Public Forum. I think most of us were there at the public forum. Who's going to come up first? Jim Vier. I think most of us were there and we heard the public comments, but it would be nice if you could maybe summarize some for us and tell us where you think the public is at this point in the process.
Happy to, thank you. Jim Vier, I'm the chairman of the working group.
And welcome, Jill.
And Jill. And I just want to thank George. George has always been one of my heroes and I don't get a chance to thank him nearly enough. But anyway, we were last here on June 23rd, when we gave a report of the working group and our recommendations for our sites that we thought needed review by a consultant on a feasibility study. And basically, what came out of that night is the desire for some public input, some continued public input. And we decided to do the community forum. And as you said, you folks were all there. You saw how well-attended it was, and that was on July 30th. And we were very, very pleased with the turnout. The committee each presented a different site and we got feedback from the community on the different sites. And much of the feedback was right in line with what the working group had been discussing for the previous couple of months. Subsequent to that meeting, the working group got back together, I think about two weeks after that, while it was still all fresh in our mind. And we had the notes from the meeting, from the whiteboards that we had taken during the conversation. And I think you might have copies of that in your package, as well as the notes from... we had a recording secretary there. So, we had those notes. And that meeting, by the way, has been replayed several times on community television. So, if anyone had missed it, it was a good opportunity to kind of replay it in our minds. And so, the working group met again and we discussed the public comments and we went through the sites again. And we decided as a group that we thought that we should... we would like to leave our recommendations the way we had left it, that it was... the comments that we had received were in keeping with what we had recommended. We... one of the sites that we did not have on the top of our list that was... had some positive comments was the Gus Canty site. And so, we looked at Gus Canty again for, I'm not quite sure how many times it was. And so we looked at Gus Canty again for, I'm not quite sure how many times that we, as a group, have discussed Gus Canty, but we did it again because there were some, some positive comments about that. And, you know, as a group, we still feel that irregardless of what happens with the football field, that that site is not really viable because of the congestion, because of the amount of activity that's on the site. We, we still don't feel that it's large enough to, to cite a new senior center. So, so where we are really as a working group is we're at a stopping point for what we can do right now. And really the next step is up to the Board of Selectmen and the town manager and what, what I think and what the group thinks the next steps are, is for you folks to discuss the, the overall site list that we had given you, you know, take our recommendations into account and then make a decision on those sites that you think need to be included in the feasibility study. And, you know, to that end, we have developed a draft RFP for the feasibility study to choose the consultant. And it went to Frank Duffy's office for review. Jill just told me that Frank has completed his review and given us our comments back today. So we'll be working on that and forwarding it off to Mr. Souso and Jennifer for review. And, but in with all of that is the fact that we have sites on that list that are under the jurisdiction of the school committee. And as an advisory group, we are not really in a position to go to the school committee and discuss their intentions with that, with those sites. So we would hope that the Board of Selectmen would initiate some type of discussion and communications with the school committee before we award a contract to review sites that may or may not be viable with the school committee. We think that financially, to be financially prudent, we only would spend money with a consultant on, on sites that are really viable. So that's where we are. You know, we're at a point now where, as George started off with, we need your help and, and that's where we're here. But to summarize, the community forum was great and, and it was wonderful to see a full room with, you know, excited participating seniors.
Great. I, I just wanted to, before we begin the discussion, just to help frame the issue a little bit for a discussion. And I wanted to start with our strategic plan because our first category in the strategic plan is financial and economic stability and community development. And in that plan specifically, it states, explore the feasibility of a new senior center. And that has a timeline of 2015 to 2017. And that's, and the responsible parties are the Board of Selectmen, the town manager and the Council on Aging. So it is part of our strategic plan, so we have made a formal commitment to move this project forward. So I want everyone to know that it is, it is there, it's in the plan, it's on the radar and it will, at some point, have to be part of the capital project. But one thing we have learned as a board, although some of them are new, is that over the years, anytime we have a project that is going to require a vote on the ballot, we have to make sure that there is solid community support for that ballot question because, and as you have noticed over the last few years, the ballot questions on wastewater have been significantly voted on by the community. They have been very significant votes, not just majorities, but large majorities. And that's because of the public discussion, the community discussion that has occurred between the Board of Selectmen, the committee itself and the community. You may remember that we even brought in a facilitator for three of those meetings over a period of about six months. I remember the very first meeting we had with a facilitator, this is what, three years ago, at least, four years ago? There were maybe 40 or 50 people at the first meeting and we thought, oh, wow, this isn't going, going to go very well. The second one, which was two or three months later, there were over 100 people at the second meeting. And then the third public forum, which was maybe another two or three months after that, because there was work in between, there were at least 200 people at the third meeting. And then, as you know, when those questions eventually dictated on the ballot, there was solid community support behind it. So I think our goal is to make sure that we, that public meeting was really, there were a lot of people in the room, but that's a very small segment of the community. So part of what we have to do as a board is to make sure as we go forward that we engage the community in this discussion because it affects everybody. I mean, all the people who are going to continue to live here are eventually going to be a senior or beyond being a senior and are going to need services in some way, shape or form and, or, and that a, that a senior center can provide. And I think the other thing we need to do is, I, I'd like to talk to people who are in their 40s and 50s and say to them, where do you see yourself when you're 70 or 75? Where, where do you think you're going to be doing then? And have you given any, because most people probably don't think when they're 40 or 50 what life is going to be like when they're 75. But this world is changing so fast and everything is so immediate and available. You know, what are people going to be doing when they're 70 and 75? If they're living here in town, what are they going to be looking for? With technology exploding, the way technology exploding, I mean, you could stay home and have anything with the flick of a finger delivered to your house the same day or the next day or, I mean, all kinds of things. So I would really love to hear what people in the community think about, what they think they would like to have for the, in a community that will help build a, help to continue to support people as they get older in activities that they want to engage in. So I think right now our goal is to follow the next step, which is to do the, first of all, the first step we have to make is to sit down with the school, members of the school committee, the superintendent, the chair, maybe one other member of the school committee and work out this issue with the, with the sites that our school, school own. We have to do that first. We have to clear that so that we know that we, actually, that that is going to be a viable site before we go to feasibility. And I think we know that that's step one. And then beyond that, then once we know what the sites are, then, then I think we need to go maybe a little more in depth with the community and talk to them about it so they really understand what we're looking at in terms of the future. Because this isn't just a building for now, it's a building for the next 20, 25 years, 30 years. So, and, and the building would have to be flexible enough to change with the times or at least what could be done with the building. Oh, enough of my proselytizing here. So, questions from the board, comments?
I, I was just going to ask you to kind of reiterate for everyone what the committee's first choices were. You said you had it down to a couple and I frankly just wanted to hear that again.
Yeah, let me just, it's a little late for me, so I want my sheet in front of me so I don't.
I know, it's tough to be at the end. I agree.
So the, the seven overall sites that we looked at the most closely was the steamship parking lot at Gifford Street, the Augusta Fossil behind Falmouth Lumber, but the part of it that's abuts Brookhill Road specifically, the T-Ticket School, the Falmouth High School Site, the School Administration Building, both the building as a redevelopment potential and the site as also a possible site for an additional building on the site, Gus Canty Building and 233 Brookhill Road, which is the nine acre site that the town owns that has part of it as the dog park. And the three sites that we were most, that we were recommending as our highest three sites were the high school site, the school administration site and the Brookhill Road Parcel. Out of those seven, certainly, you know, based on your discussions, you may change those, add to them, delete to them or whatever, but that, that was the consensus of the working group.
So you got the impression that, I, I can't remember now everything, every site you meant, did you mention the T-Ticket School at all?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, you did, that's what I saw. Okay. Because that wasn't received very favorably at the public meeting.
Certainly wasn't. It certainly was not.
No.
And your committee is not favorable to Gus Canty, so any reconstruction is of a school building, otherwise we're talking new building.
The administration.
That's correct.
It's a school.
That's correct. That was, that was the consensus of the working group. That's correct.
Any other questions, comments at this stage? Because we, our next step is really to get those school properties resolved.
And I would encourage, it's been a while since we did our needs assessment, you know?
Yeah.
So I would, you know, I would encourage everybody to, to become familiar with that because a lot of the information, Madam Chairman, that you were talking about was addressed in, in that needs assessment.
Yes, I, I remember, I remember if we're reading it, I still have the booklet at home too.
So that was a really, that was, that was a very successful process, I think.
Right. And I think we need to continue to work that with the community, to bring those issues back up again and revalidate. I mean, that was what, almost a couple, a year and a half ago?
It was just a year ago and some of the survey started with the age 40 to 59. We broke it out in three segments, so we did reach out to those age brackets. So it's a lot of good information. And when you talked about future reaching out to the community as part of the feasibility study is with a consultant under the direction of yourselves, the town manager, we would hold a forums as well.
Yeah.
Becky? What is your timeline?
It's our timeline.
It's now our timeline.
It's, that's correct. It's now your timeline. However, you know, when we started this process, we put together a very aggressive timeline because we, we realized that the, the senior population has been waiting a long time for this building. You know, we, we all know about the stalled efforts we had ten or so years ago. So that was our, our intention. And our intention originally as a group was to, for the, to, by this time, have already had a consultant onboard so that we would be able to, in November, at November Town Meeting, be able to at least give a progress report from the consultant. So, you know, we're, we're a little behind on that because we took a few extra steps, you know, the community forum and all that, you know, and that's, that's very valuable information. So our timeline was, was aggressive. We knew that right from the start and we're a little behind on that now. And, you know, whenever this, however this plays out is the way it's going to be.
Is the funding for the feasibility study already, we already, we have not voted that? Do we have a placeholder?
No, the funding, the funding is, we have $50,000. We had a $20,000 grant that we received through the friends, the Falmouth Senior Center. And at the last town meeting, we voted $30,000 additional. So there is $50,000 available for the feasibility study now.
Without having to go to town meeting, we can do that?
Yep, that money is, is there and, and available. Certainly if, if we expand the feasibility study scope to have, you know, multiple sites studied, then 50,000 may not be enough, but that was, we do have the 50,000 available now.
But if we're told the schools aren't possible, then that's, you know, narrows the feasibility study quite a bit.
Or it, it opens it up to take, going back and, and reevaluate.
So that's the reason why we have to have the conversation with the school department right away.
Right, that saves money. Yep, absolutely. Anybody else have a question? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for staying.
Thank you.
All the best.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, do we have reports from individual selectmen? Anybody?
I have a question to all of us. Who does the response on the email from the selectmen?
I do.
Do you, do you do, but we don't.
Or Julian, I sent, I probably, do I, do I not copy you all the time?
No.
Maybe I don't. I will do that.
Yeah, that would be good. It's just that there were some that are kind of personal, it's an issue, one person.
Well, I will copy it either way on, sometimes I just copy them and refer them to the town manager because it doesn't make sense for me to comment on something that I can't affect, you know, that somebody else has to do it. So I'll copy you from now on. Okay. Go ahead.
I just mentioned that at the Conservation Committee here, meeting that I attended last, no, week before last, they've set September 24th as their hearing for the Little Pond Sewer Project. So it's something that.
The Conservation Commission?
Conservation Commission. I guess they're going to be looking at those issues. That's just a date that I wanted to mention to you.
Oh, okay.
We had a meeting with the school committee members over the Lawrence Windows Projects and MSBA project. You know, just participated in that and, you know, I think the ball's right now in the school department stands to pursue that, but that's something that I participated in. The CPC has actually looked at all the proposals that have been submitted to them and have allocated funds to them and I think that's going to be folded into the warrant booklet for town, for all town meetings, so we'll be seeing that and reviewing it in that respect. That's it.
Do you have?
I already reported on a couple of liaison committees, but I, I did want to add that Superintendent Gifford's Comprehensive Strategic Plan Committee, which was very large and Sam participated as well. I think it started with, seems like 45 people from various walks of life in town, that a lot of energy in terms of ideas for where needs are and really cutting edge educational processes that really consider each and every child's needs and, and really that are, that are not overly technical and, you know, test oriented, kind of that, that also balance some, some fun and, and basic education. And it's, it's really all coming together and I, I think you'll be able to look for that. There's another meeting tonight. I'm on the outreach committee and, and there's some interesting ideas from teachers all the way up to specialists of every kind and vice principals, and Mr. Demures is, is one of them. And so I just wanted to kind of highlight that that'll be coming and, and I really think everyone should really take the opportunity to look and see the, the forward-thinking ideas that are, that I expect to see in this report. So that's just, you know, news, news coming up.
I just wanted to remind everyone that Thursday is 9/11 and there'll be a ceremony at 8:30 at the fire station for anyone who can attend. Julian, town managers report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to remind the board and others listening that the warrant for the, the warrant for the November 2014 town meeting closes on Friday, September 12th, that's this Friday. We do continue to work on multiple town initiatives, which we've discussed with the board for inclusion in this warrant, so more to come. Thank you.
And actually, isn't primary date tomorrow? I mean, should we? Tomorrow. Mentioned. Yes, vote, vote tomorrow. Yes, everybody vote, very definitely.
Those three precincts are still voting at the high school.
High school, precinct, well, I know precinct 6 is there.
Had to remind myself today where I was going tomorrow.
So anybody else have anything they want to mention before we adjourn?
Want to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.